Okay, let's see. Call meeting in order at 5:30. We have a quorum. And any public comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Darshan Smolletin. You're on the top, one, two, three, four, five, six. So that's three minutes per. For two B.
Negotiations. Okay, so then I, here I am. I'm sorry. I just thought that the teachers were first, that's all.
Parents first, okay. Good evening, or good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, Mr. Gonzalez. Hopefully, I'm here to discuss Mr. Gonzalez's review. And I basically just wanted to be nice for the sake of new beginnings. But I did want to make sure that the Board had a little bit, because parents didn't really have input when Mr. Gonzalez was hired. I wanted to talk a little bit about the things that we were looking for and then some concerns that after talking to tens of thousands of people that I feel that the community supports. And one of the things that personally for me is I don't trust you yet, Ernie. And I would like to see you rebuild that trust with our community. We were looking for you to protect our kids, and I don't feel like that happened. Now that the community has kind of made their voices clear about what they respect and don't, I'm hoping that you will align with that. I also would like to see improved communication. I see a lot of misinformation about our district on social media and out in the public. And I would like to see that addressed. I mean, you can't put out every fire that comes up, but at the same time, I think that parents really do enjoy information. And I think that we will find ourselves in a better place if we get better communication from you. And then I would also like to see a plan going forward. One of the things that we thought was a problem was that, you know, our last superintendent was let go for whatever reason. And everyone said that we needed better test scores. And I haven't seen, as a parent in the district, anything implemented to improve those test scores. And I understand that there have been other things going on, but I would like to see a plan. I would like to see our teachers involved in that and feeling supported. And I hope that, given the mass, well, I think that this should be your wheelhouse. You were in charge of HR, and we have a ton of openings. We have an exodus of staff. And that should be something that I would hope that you could abate. And then also the issues with the teachers' pay. So that's it. Thank you.
James Laxson. Or Laxson?
Hello, Board. I'm James Laxson, father of a kindergarten student at Fletcher. And the Fletcher Mandarin Immersion Program needs more Mandarin teachers. The teachers that are there now are excellent. They're some of the best, at least in my experience. And you're lucky, because that means you're at a critical period where you still have some very good teachers in the program, instead of just having the worst left over. So we recently came to Orange looking for a Mandarin immersion program. We bought a house here so our kid could attend the program. And I think it would be great if somehow you could hire more Mandarin teachers, just enough to fill each grade at least. That seems like it would make sense. Possibly through hiring and retaining, you know, become attractive, maybe H1Bs, work with HR for funding. It sounds like teachers need better salaries. You can become a very attractive district if you offer labor certification through the perm program after H1B for green cards. The teachers you already have, you really, really would like to retain, in my opinion. They're working triple duty to shore up what is a lack of people who are able to serve the children in the curriculum that was advertised or promised a Mandarin immersion program. So right now, I think it would be a good time to act. So I would hope that you guys can do that. I don't know you individually or your track records, but I do appreciate your time. And this is a program with a lot of potential, because you look around to the different areas of Orange County, and they are not ubiquitous. They're a major magnet. They're a major draw for people. There are people who bring their students from other districts just for this program. And I think they're also a little bit surprised when the program doesn't have enough teachers. In the meantime, a stopgap would be hiring aides who can assist the Mandarin teachers, at least one aide per two grades. Right now, I think there's one aide for seven grades. So you guys know how to manage this. I don't. I just wanted to bring my thoughts to your attention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer Greenwald. After Jennifer Greenwald will be Greg Goodlander.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board Trustees, Superintendent Gonzalez, Executive Cabinet, our Student Board members are here, OUSD staff and community members. My name is Jennifer Greenwald. I'm a longtime listener, first-time caller. I'm the proud parent of a second grader at Fletcher Mandarin Language and Gate Academy, a second grader that I transfer in from our home district, Newport Mesa, which also has an excellent Mandarin immersion program. And this is my fifth year teaching TK at Fletcher. I'm here tonight asking the Board of Education and Human Resources support to strengthen and sustain the district's Golden Bell Award-winning Mandarin immersion program, also known as MIP. Our MIP teachers do not currently have the resources and support they need to effectively teach and meet the requirements of a rigorous biliteracy program. I have seen their hard work, dedication and passion for the MIP program, but I have also seen the frustration and stress levels increase over the past three years. Mandarin immersion parents are frustrated, and people from outside the district have a wider option and choice of programs from which to choose. We're losing some of our students to them. Fletcher's MIP program needs support with hiring and retaining highly qualified teachers. New hires need assistance with filing the H1B working visa paperwork, and tenured teachers require assistance with obtaining a green card. Other districts are doing this. And they also offer bilingual stipends and/or sign-on bonuses and competitive salaries for Mandarin teachers. OUSD is failing to remain competitive and sustain our award-winning program if we do not offer these benefits. In addition to the compensation, we need to hire Mandarin aides to help close the learning gap due to not having a kindergarten Mandarin teacher for the past three years. My son and other parents in attendance tonight have students that are behind due to that lack of foundational instructional skills. Fletcher has just one and a half Mandarin aides shared between seven grade levels, K through sixth. Our MIP teachers recommend the hiring of more aides to have at least one aide per every two grade levels. Our third request is to hire a Mandarin TOSA responsible for implementing the Mandarin curriculum instruction K through 12, not just for Fletcher, and for planning for intervention to those students that are not at grade level. We all know we're ADA-funded. We're missing an opportunity to attain and retain students unless the Board and HR invest in our Mandarin immersion program. Please, one, assist with the immigration paperwork process and offer competitive compensation and stipends or signing bonuses. Two, hire additional Mandarin aides. And three, hire a Mandarin TOSA. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Done.
We have three more speakers. Greg Goodlander, then David Scott, and the last speaker is Dr. Heather Chapman.
Hello, President Ortega, remaining members of the Board, Superintendent Gonzalez, Cabinet and Community. My name is Greg Goodlander, the proud president of the Orange Unified Education Association. In a few moments, you will go to closed session to give direction to your bargaining team regarding negotiations between the Board and the Union. I know many of my members have written to you about the incredible work that they do each day. Many have expressed to you that while you state publicly that the staff of OUSD is amazing, you're offering a salary that is very far from amazing. The district is sitting on reserves significantly higher than neighboring districts. It is not the industry standard to hoard money and not invest in those that make the most difference in a student's education, their teachers. During the political chaos in this room for the past year, our educators have maintained a normalcy, teaching and helping our students every day we keep the district running. I'm asking that tonight you direct your bargaining team to come to the table with a compensation proposal that is competitive, fair and reflective of the incredible work of our teachers. We've been bargaining consistently since April of 2023. Investing in compensation is investing in students. When a kid goes home, she or he doesn't talk about egress. They don't talk about the newly adopted textbooks, and they definitely don't go home to talk about deferred maintenance funding. They talk about their teacher, their counselor, their school psychologist and their principals. Let's invest in what matters, our educators. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, trustees and all. My name is David Scott, and I want to speak on behalf of the Mandarin Immersion Program, but I also want to speak on teachers as whole. As a third-generation OUSD student, and my kid's now fourth-generation OUSD student, my grandma being a student who went to Orange High when it was still at Chapman University, this is home. This is a place where I've grown up, where we care, where we bleed OUSD. The Mandarin program would have been something that I would have loved to participate in growing up. I took two years of Italian at El Medina, and I can barely order at Olive Garden. My wife took three years of French at Canyon and tells me not to talk about her ability to speak French here publicly. My son is in sixth grade and speaks and reads and sings in Mandarin. My daughter's in second grade, and I'm scared that she's not going to have that same opportunity. My son is in TK, his teacher's sitting right there, and he loves her. And I'm scared that he's not going to get the same opportunity, because we're not giving enough support, both in terms of salary and resources, to the people who are making the most difference in our students' lives. We're talking about declining enrollment. This is the feather in the cap of Orange Unified School District. The Mandarin immersion program pulls in more students from other districts than anywhere else and doesn't get the support needs. But I mean, it's not a secret that Orange Unified has not been paying its teachers well. I've grown up here. I can speak on this. I remember going to school with teachers picketing. There's an opportunity for you all to fix this, for finally to be a chance for you guys to say, you know what, I was part of the solution to fix what had been going on for a long, long time. Everyone knows that Orange Unified School District teachers are not paid equal to their effort and quality. And that's shameful. It's embarrassing. I would love for you guys to fix that tonight, and you have that chance. I hope you take it. Thank you.
It doesn't pay to stay. I never thought I'd get this button out again. Good evening. My name is Dr. Heather Chapman. I was hired in the Orange Unified School District in 1998, in one of the first rounds of the mass exodus from this district because of all kinds of turmoil, not the least of which was pay. I came in with a bachelor's degree from a prestigious college and a master's degree from Pepperdine University and a full teaching credential. And people said, don't go to Orange Unified. The pay is not what you can get elsewhere. And I said, no. I went to El Medina. I am of El Medina, and that is where I can make a difference. And then, year after year in my career, it's been this over and over again for different reasons. We have, of course, been through a lot in the last couple of years. But before that, we took more furlough days for more years in a row than neighboring districts. We reopened during COVID sooner than our like districts. And we pivoted. We were allowed to leave work on Friday with them, maybe we'll see you on Monday. And we had to report on Monday after Friday, March 13, 2020, and be ready to teach and be off and running. Other districts took a breath. We haven't had a breath in four years, or maybe in 26. And so I just ask that while you are being responsible with taxpayer money, I'm a homeowner in this district. Being responsible is respectable, being moderate and being careful. But something has to change. I'm working in a school where there are positions that have not been filled all school year because it doesn't pay for our CTE staff members to stay when they can go elsewhere and be on a different salary schedule or have different working conditions and not be on a semester-to-semester contract. So I ask that you think long and hard, you do what is responsible, but also possible. If the teachers, nurses, speech therapists, media specialists, our counselors and all of our certificated staff are really the priority in making Orange Unified a district of distinction again, thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it, and adjourn to closed session.
Appreciate it, and adjourn to close session.
I just want to make sure I understand how this works.
Thank you.
Do you have a phone call?
I was about to say something.
Do you have a phone call?
I don't have a phone.
What was the other one?
14P, which is a contract.
Hold on. And then... Okay, if you can please join me. Call the regular meeting to order at 7:20. We apologize for the delay for you. If you could please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Report of closed session.
Thank you, Mr. President. For item 2C, the board accepts the stipulated expulsion agreement for student expulsion case 232405 and orders the student expelled based on violation of Ed Code 48915A1A, Education Code Section 48915A1B, and 48915A1E. The board orders the student expelled for one calendar year and adopts the recommended rehabilitation plan. The board sets the first regular board meeting in February 2025 as a meeting in which it will review the student for readmission. The vote was 5-0. That concludes our report from closed session.
Okay, prior to adoption of the agenda, staff had asked to pull 14P for further review.
Yes, and we plan to bring it back in May.
Okay. And then if the board is okay with us moving action item 8A, it is the El Medina renaming. The reason for it is if we can bring them up right after adoption due to the fact that a lot of the students have testing right now. So we would like to get them in, present, approve it, and then so that they can go back home and go study and do what needs to get done. So if the board...
What was the number that was pulled? 14D?
P as in Paul.
P as in Paul. Okay, thank you.
So the board's okay with 8A? Okay. Okay, with that mentioned, is there a motion? I'll move... Ms. Yamazaki, second. I'll do it. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor? Aye. Those opposed? 5-0. Pull up 8A, the renaming of El Medina to the Freddie Freeman Center.
Mr. Rivera will present on this item.
Okay. Are the students here?
We just need a minute for our students to come in. I think if we can have you sit for a minute. For those of you that do not know me, I'm Dave Rivera. I'm the deputy superintendent and chief business official for the district. Last... Couple of weeks ago, we had a grand opening for our new clubhouse at El Medina. And it was made possible by a generous donation of a former alumni, Freddie Freeman, who's a current Dodger. It was a beautiful day. The family was there, his wife. So we could not have this project move forward without the half a million dollar donation. We have a video that we want to share with you of that day's events and leading up to those day's events. We had a lot of rain. We had problems getting the portable up here because of snow and inclement weather. So we have a video that we want to share with you that summarizes what has happened leading up to the grand opening.
This school means a lot to not only me but to my family. This is a safe haven for a lot of us. When my mom passed when I was 10 years old, my oldest brother was going to El Medina. And Steve Bernard, the head baseball coach, took unbelievable care of him and our family. So when I graduated here, I always wanted to potentially give back if I had the resources. And God has blessed me in a wonderful way. So I think it's only fitting that I come back to the place where I've spent many, many, many hours dedicating to my craft to be able to build a clubhouse for these kids and the future generation of kids at El Medina.
Freddie, I know I've told you this before. We're super proud of you. What you're giving back to your high school is so incredible to us, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
On behalf of the Orange Unified School District, I would like to thank Mr. Freddie Freeman and his wife Chelsea for their generous donation that contributed to the baseball clubhouse project at El Medina High School. This beautiful facility will serve as a second home to many of our students for years to come. We could not be more proud of the wonderful citizen he is and are deeply appreciative of his support. He is a wonderful role model and a shining example of what kinds of graduates we hope to nourish in our district.
It would be so easy with your career and family commitments to move on, forget about your past, but you are rooted to this school and you choose to embrace it for the benefit of every vanguard after you who will enjoy what you provided and will hopefully be inspired to provide for others as you have. In all, Freddie Freeman is so much more than a great ball player. He is a great man. Thank you, Freddie.
El Medina is a wonderful place to be, and we're honored that you look back on your time being a vanguard positively and not only come back, but give back to your community. And we're so proud of you. Thank you very much.
So first off, I just want to say thank you to everybody for being here. You guys know I just like to donate and do all my stuff and kind of hang behind the scenes, but this is special for you guys to come out and support El Medina, El Medina Baseball, the Orange Unified School District. And I just want to say thank you to my family, my friends, the staff, Orange Unified, and everyone that came out here. I can't wait for everyone to enjoy such an amazing building that we've been able to establish here. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Perfect, so when you get kicked out of games, you can still see the game. Charlie, you got your own locker.
This project for us, which took about a year and a half from its inception, it was really a labor of love to be able to provide something for our students as well as take a generous donation from a great man. So we have some pictures that we want to take, and we have some souvenirs to provide to provide you. Is it time the students can come up?
Just do it over there.
Do it over there?
Those boys are tall.
And I'm gonna have you guys scoot over this way for me. We're gonna have to do this every time from now on, actually. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Smile, everybody. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Coach, would you like to say anything or any of the players? Or principal?
Just sincere thank you to everybody. It's amazing. It's beyond what we could have ever expected. We're just into it right now. Kids are enjoying it. It's gonna be a place where their bonds together is gonna be, like, grow even greater. And the time that they're gonna spend with one another in this facility is gonna be outstanding. We're so excited and couldn't be happier. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you put in behind the scenes. It really means a lot. We're gonna have a great time in the clubhouse. Thank you.
So I believe we do have a recommended action for the board to consider?
Yes. You have a resolution that is consistent with our board policies? And we ask that you approve this resolution as presented, naming the clubhouse in honor of Freddie Freeman.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation. Thank you to Mr. Freeman and his family. It's gonna do wonders for all the ball players there. So looking forward to the tremendous outcomes. So with that said, I would like to move this item. Is there a second?
A second?
Thank you, Ms. Yamazaki. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? 5-0. On to...
Mr. President, before we move on to 4A, I need to apologize to Mr. Resnick. On 3D, we had a blue card there. We were so busy taking something off the agenda and moving things around that I didn't have an opportunity. We don't have a clerk right now, so I am the clerk. So that was my mistake. So Mr. Resnick, would you like to come up here and have three minutes on 3D?
Thank you for allowing me to speak, Superintendent. This is the first time I've been allowed to speak on pulling the blue card for the agenda. And it's unfortunate that it required an attorney that I hired to write a cease and desist to John Ortega to allow me to speak on the topic. But here I am, kind of shocked that I was given this opportunity. So thank you again, Superintendent Gonzalez. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
And we do have one speaker for 4A.
Okay.
Scott Resnick.
Well, to jump off of what I was just talking about, it's really unfortunate that our rights have to be reminded to the trustees, or specifically this one trustee, to not be violated. The First Amendment Coalition, over the last year and a half, sent you to cease and desist, reminding you to stop violating speakers' rights. You've made legal threats from the dais. You've threatened people who were coming up here to speak. We have absolute immunity up here. We could say almost anything that we want. But you continued. You forgot about the first cease and desist, the second one was sent to you. And you had to be sent another cease and desist to stop you from violating our rights. If that's what it takes for somebody to be able to come up here and freely speak, to be able to pull a blue card and get the opportunity to speak, for them to have an attorney in their back pocket or one on speed dial who can then write a cease and desist or possibly engage in litigation because you continue to put blue cards at the end of the meeting when they had no reason to be put at the end of the meeting, changing the rules in the middle of the game? That just is not appropriate for an elected official. It's not fair to put the taxpayers in limbo of having to pay legal fees to defend a lawsuit. If I want... If I come up here and I pull a blue card and I'm told that it has to go to the end of the meeting, my only remedy at this point, or anybody else's here, is to hire an attorney. I'm fortunate that I know what it takes to the next steps if my rights are violated. I'm fortunate that I know what it takes to the next steps if my rights are violated, but a lot of people don't, so you're up here silencing people and, and now we're in a situation where fortunately, my card was pulled and I got the chance to speak, but what's to stop you from putting blue cards at the end of meetings or ignoring them altogether in the future? What's to stop you from stopping, what's stopping you from threatening us from the dais? Or you continue to do it, you did it two meetings ago, so I, I don't know what can be done, well, I do know what can be done, and it's gonna happen in November, to stop you from these threats from the dais, but there probably are things that can happen and possibly even tonight, hopefully, to remove you as a liability to the taxpayers in the district.
Oh, I just have to run it through and see who... Okay, on to 4A, organization of the board. That's not the certification, correct? Or is it?
No, this is a request for organization meeting to...
Okay, so it's not the certification, okay.
Correct.
All right, I just saw certified, that's all. Okay, it has been brought forward to the superintendent by Ms. Erickson and Ms. Yamazaki have called for an organization meeting to elect a new slate of officers, so with that stated, we'll proceed forward, election, what? Oh, okay. Election of board officers, and so board president?
Are there comments on that?
Oh, wait. Oh, no, that's after, yeah. No, this is at the very beginning, yeah, I know, it's confusing. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, I want to thank the community for its work in the last few months towards working for a better Orange Unified School District, I think the community spoke loudly and pretty clearly about what it wanted and what they were not happy with and not being happy with the way things were going. Trustee Yamazaki and I brought this item in response to what we believe is a call for better governance, honest and transparent process, thoughtful leadership, and really loyalty to Orange Unified, student, staff, and families. Further, we believe that there is good cause for the replacement of the president currently is this subject right now, based upon what Mr. Resnick said and based upon the two letters that were received from the First Amendment Coalition, asking Mr. Ortega to stop and cease from violating speakers' First Amendment rights. So, you know, what happened over the last 15 months has been anything but normal, I think disagreement on issues of policy is welcome and constructive when there's genuine collaboration among people who don't necessarily see things identically, but there's a huge problem with chaos and lies and silencing our parents and staff. So I believe as a board, we can do much better than we've done in the last year, I think we can strengthen Orange Unified and get back on track to go into a positive direction for all students, all students, family and community, and I think that starts with leadership on the board that reflects our intentions to move forward with integrity and cooperation. And so I think the person that really demonstrates the right qualities at the right time is Anna Page, and I would nominate you, Anna, for president.
To, to the board, before you take up the nomination for board president, I do have a few cards on 4B, so before we get to discussion on that nomination, is the board okay if we call up the blue cards that we have on this item?
Yeah.
Okay, so it looks like we have four, so there'd be three minutes each, first we have Alex Tran, Alexander Tran, and then followed by Michelle Weisenberg.
Test, test, just working, see if it's okay, all right. All right, absolutely, well, good morning, board trustees, except for this new union board majority, because clearly, they woke up with vengeance on their minds, I mean, isn't it pretty ironic? The first action that this new board majority will undertake is to oust John Ortega and Andrew Rumsey as board president and vice president, what's next? Will they remove the superintendent too? Perhaps some of the old board appointees? Maybe I should dub this the Thursday massacre. Last I checked, voters were promised a return back to normalcy, instead, they received, they received an unusual reorganization of this board that can only be considered a hostile takeover. Wasn't this recall about fiscal responsibility, good governance, not a political takeover? This was no endamis from the voters especially. President Ortega and Vice President Rumsey have worked emphatically at the interests of the students, most notably with the 50-meter pool at Villa Park High School. Under their leadership, the district has oversaw a myriad of accolades, to oust them would certainly be our loss. Please, pick principle over politics, because this move would serve contrary to why you obtained this majority, thank you.
We have Michelle Weisenberg and then followed by Alex Brusaw.
As we move forward with the OUSD board, I believe it's imperative that we elect a new board president. Currently, John Ortega is our board or president, but is he the right leader for this position? Over, Mr. Ortega has been on the board for over 20 years, despite pushing for term limits many years ago, he clearly is not engaged with the job, doesn't make effort to connect with the schools, rarely reads the Friday packet, shows disdain for the other board members and audience members. Because of these reasons, I hope that we can remove Mr. Ortega and replace him with somebody who's actually earned the position.
Alex Brusaw, followed by Darshan Smaloden.
John Ortega has used his position as board president of Orange Unified School District to bully teachers and parents, to speak over other board members, and to generally impose his will on this board, no matter what. He told me that I couldn't have a recall sign displayed in front of me because it was disruptive of a board meeting. This is not the actions of somebody who is qualified to be president of Orange Unified School District. I urge this board to remove John Ortega as president of Orange Unified School District and instead, give us somebody who's got values that can be compatible with the position, you know, somebody who knows how to run a meeting, somebody who doesn't speak over, shut down, or deny comment to opposing viewpoints, somebody who values transparency, openness, and accessibility for district parents, teachers, students, and staff, somebody who prioritizes Orange Unified School District, students, and administration of OUSD for the benefit of our district, not outside parties that paid for his campaign. Let's get rid of John Ortega and put somebody on as president who knows what they're doing and who actually has the interests of Orange Unified School District in their hearts. As for other people saying that this is a political thing, no it's not, it's a good administration thing, you know? All right, thank you.
Good evening, board, Superintendent Gonzalez, my name is Darshan Smaloden, I'm a parent in the district, proud parent in the district. I, I won't take long, but I, because I think everything has been said, however, I will say that in the name of moving on and civility, transparency, and having someone who does not chill First Amendment rights and involvement of parents, that I do think it is time to make a change with Mr. Ortega, since you are already needing to replace Ms. Minor, that's it.
Onto, okay, so, yeah, so Ms. Erickson made a motion for Ms. Page, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, anyone else?
Can Ms. Page speak into whether or not she is willing or able?
I was just, that's the next thing. Do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Okay. Okay, with that stated, all those in favor of appointing Anna Page as board president?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
No, let's see, passage 32, by the way, I'm just trying to figure out the thing here. Okay, so Ms. Page is now the board president and... So, thank you, one last thing I'd like to say is about accusations, everything I did was legally binding and run by the attorney for every action taken, I just want to make that for the record. And now the, the meeting is now, Ms. Anna Page.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega, and I will definitely turn to all of you, as it's my first time. We move on to 4C, vice president, are there any nominations for the office of vice president?
I'd like to make a comment, please.
Okay.
In the spirit of what trustee Erickson said, the board needs to be unified, work together, focus on academics of the students, and really go forward and look forward, and I think it would be good to keep trustee Rumsey as vice president. So, being that she is in that position, do we need to vote? We need to vote on it and continue?
Second.
Yeah, do we have?
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Yamazaki and a second by trustee Erickson. Trustee Rumsey, do you accept?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes, five zero. Congratulations, Ms. Rumsey. Okay, we move on to 4D, election of board clerk, at this time, are there any nominations for the office of clerk?
Being that trustee Erickson did a fantastic job, and she's an awesome speaker and she's quick, I would like to nominate trustee Erickson. Do you accept?
Sure. I'll second.
As long as I don't have to read them all out loud like I did during COVID, that'd be great.
Okay, so there's a motion by trustee Yamazaki and a second by me, trustee Erickson accepts, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes, four one. And then we move on to E. Thank you, we move on to board committee appointments, these are different committees for Orange City Schools Coordinating Committee, we are asking for three representatives, Legislative Coalition, there are three representatives, and the district nominating committee, that serves on the Orange County Committee on School District Organization. So we can begin with the Orange City Schools Coordinating Committee.
Can, can I make a...
You go ahead.
Okay, all right, so I just want to note that historically, we had three representatives and for both Orange City School and Legislative Coalition, but being that we're a five-member board, I believe that we would be violating the Brown Act if we had three representatives at the meeting, so I think it's best if we do two.
I think to be compliant with the, with the Brown Act, we would need two, now, it doesn't stop the board right now from choosing two and then a third should the board, you know, come back to seven, or you could just take it up at the time that the board composition changes again.
It's up to the board.
We'll just do two, I think.
Let's start with two and then bring it up if we have whatever changes, when it changes. Any volunteers?
I'll do it.
Okay, we have trustee Erickson and a second person.
Last time I remember, we were talking about the Legislative Coalition, what, when do they meet? Do they meet during the day?
Yes.
And once a month?
It's once a month. First Wednesday.
It's the first Wednesday, around, around what time?
Eleven.
Okay.
However, the Orange City Schools meeting does take place after...
At five o'clock, right?
At five o'clock.
Do they, does Legislative Coalition meet in the summer?
No.
So they have a, probably an April, no, a May meeting?
May.
And then a...
They resume in September.
September, okay.
So September is their...
I, I'm actually interested in that, I would like to, you know, try to get off work to, to go...
For the LegCo?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we gonna finish Orange City Schools first?
Yeah, we need one more for Orange City Schools.
I'll do it if nobody, I was gonna just give the opportunity to somebody else, but if no one wants to, I can.
That committee does meet in the evening, Ms. Rumsey, if you're interested.
I, I did that a couple of years ago, I, I'd like to do this other one, okay?
Okay, so for Orange City Schools, we have trustee Erickson and trustee Yamazaki, and then for LegCo, we have Ms. Rumsey, do we have a second?
Well, I, I am there by default because I am the legislative representative for PTA, so I attend.
So it should only be the two of us for now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two in May? Okay, thanks.
Is it two, oh, well, two in May for this month because we don't have one in June and...
Oh, okay.
Thank you. It's May 29th.
Okay, I was serving on that committee and I just want to give my appreciation to the LegCo for all their great work that they're doing and I'm looking forward to hearing additional reports during our board meetings. And then lastly, we have the district nominating committee and we're looking for one representative.
I was originally the alternate for that, so I don't know if it's on record with the county.
Okay, so...
But I don't wanna, you know...
Is anyone else interested? Okay, trustee Yamazaki.
All right, if somebody wants to do City Schools, I'm open to that.
City Schools.
You want to do City Schools?
I'll do that one as well, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I can serve as an alternate for Ms. Yamazaki on the district nominating committee.
Okay, great, so to clarify, for Orange City Schools, we have trustee Erickson and trustee Rumsey, for LegCo, we have trustee Rumsey and Yamazaki, and we have trustee Yamazaki for the Orange County Committee with trustee Erickson as the alternate. All right, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, trustee Rumsey, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes, five zero. Thank you. Now we move on to the superintendent's report, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Page. Yesterday was an exciting day for our group of parents who graduated from Orange Police Department Hispanic Outreach Program, the Spanish language version of the Citizens Academy. This five-week program, conducted entirely in Spanish, aims to educate... This five-week program, conducted entirely in Spanish, aims to educate participants about various facets of police, police work while empowering citizens to effect positive change in their communities. The Orange PD and the Friendly Center have been partners in the Hispanic Outreach Program for several years. This year, OPD joined forces with Orange High School to have part of the families, the, in the Panther Community, participate. The group grew to include parents from our elementary and middle schools as well. We thank our partners at OPD for providing this program as one of the many valuable resources available to our community. Also, I wanted to highlight VAPA performances. Last month, the Orange Unified School District, in collaboration with the Orange Unified Public Schools Foundation, hosted the highly anticipated OUSD Honor Band and Orchestra Concerts at Chapman University and Memorial Hall. Similarly, our Vocal Music Festival and Honors Choir Performance held just last Friday continued to impress with exceptional talents displayed by our students. Thank you very much. On behalf of the district, I'd like to thank the Orange Unified Public Schools Foundation for their ongoing partnership and express my gratitude to our dedicated music directors for their time and efforts in facilitating these wonderful opportunities for our students. Also, I wanted to provide some information on our OUSD Administrators of the Year. Previously, I had provided, uh, information on our, uh, Classified and Certificated Employees of the Year. So the District Administrators of the Year process is conducted in partnership with Leadership Team Orange, which is the Orange Unified School District's chapter of the Association of California School Administrators. I'd like to thank, uh, I'd like to congratulate this year's Administrators of the Year. Mr. Eddie Bertho Angel, Executive Director of Student and Community Services. Susanna Solis, Director of Human Resources. And Mr. Michael Mike Lee, Assistant Principal of Santiago Middle School. We thank them for their hard work and dedication at Orange Unified, and they'll also be recognized along with the Site and District Employees of the Year at our annual celebration at Fred Kelly Stadium. For Measure S, uh, if you drive by our high schools, you'll see that a lot of progress has been made on the second phase of Measure S since our last update. Our Communications Department created a video, uh, so that way we can update our community on how things are going. So Max, can you please play the video for us?
Hello, my name's Isala Vazquez. I am the Senior Executive Director of Facilities Development and Planning. Measure S was approved by voters residing within Orange Unified School District boundaries in 2016. This $288 million general obligation bond was specifically written to fund facility modernization and construction projects at our four comprehensive high schools. As a result of our Measure S Phase One projects, OUSD students and teachers are utilizing seventy-one state-of-the-art classrooms, just over 200,000 square feet of modern teaching and learning space across our cutting-edge science centers on the campuses at Orange, Villa Park, Canyon, and Al Medina High Schools. We are now well into Phase Two of our Measure S projects, which will provide additional campus improvements specific to each school site's needs. I'd like to share some recent updates. Canyon High School's Phase Two project is underway with the 500-building gutted and interior classroom reconstruction ongoing. Work has been steady and will continue through the school year. With the completion of the restroom upgrades a priority, we are pleased to announce that the remodeled student restrooms open in February for student use. At Al Medina High School, renovation of the quad is complete and students have been enjoying the open space. In terms of ongoing classroom renovations, staff was relocated in March of 2023 for a overhaul of the interior structure of the 800 building. We are excited to announce the completion of the state-of-the-art building that houses specialized spaces, including a black box theater, dance studio, graphic design and digital photography classrooms, ceramic studio, culinary arts kitchen, and arts facility. These modern classrooms are designed to inspire creativity, innovation, and collaboration.
Good morning and welcome to your new home.
Students and teachers were welcomed back to a fully renovated 800 building after spring break.
I like it. It's very shiny. It's spacious. I think the kids are going to be absolutely ecstatic about it.
Currently, the interior demolition of the 400 and 500 buildings has started and work is ongoing. At Orange High School, the new two-story classroom and Student Services Building is fully framed and enclosed with exterior plaster in place. Throughout the months of April and May, the focus on the interior of the building includes the installation of security, fire alarm, data, and phone systems. On the exterior of the building, glazing for the windows is being installed to seal them from moisture intrusion. At the same time, work in the courtyard will resume with grading, landscaping, and other enhancements aimed at creating a welcoming outdoor environment. At Villa Park High School, construction on the new building continues throughout the school year and is scheduled to be completed next summer with a planned opening in fall 2024. Inside, the installation of drywall on the second floor is progressing smoothly. Door frames are complete and the heating and ventilation and air conditioning units are successfully craned into place on the rooftop. In the 100-200 building, the stairways are being relocated to the interior of the campus to enhance security, and a new elevator is being installed for ADA access. These modern and functional facilities, coupled with enriching learning opportunities, are a testament to the collective vision and dedication of our community. These projects represent a significant investment in the future of our students. A special thank you goes out to our taxpayers. It's been amazing to see these major projects come to life, and we are inspired by the positive impact they will have on generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much to Isala Vazquez and the Communications Team for that. You know, great update on all the things going on with Measure S. It was a little bit of a longer video, but we thought it was important to show all the work that's going on because there's a lot of work going on. Well, um, there are many great things that are happening throughout our district, and these are just a few of the highlights that I wanted to share. And this concludes my Superintendent's Report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. Up next, we have the President's Report. I don't know, trustee Ortega, do you have anything you want to share or do you want to share, um, later? Okay.
All right, I thought you had given this. I apologize, Alex Brusaw.
Brusaw.
Sorry.
Thank you, members of the board. Once again, my name is Alex Brusaw. I am a homeowner. I'm a parent within Orange Unified School District. Uh, I've come up to speak about the President's Report a number of times before. You guys probably remember it. But just as a bit of a refresher, beginning with meetings after the dismissal of our award-winning former OUSD and now Westminster Unified School District Superintendent, Dr. Gumary Hansen, the President's Report became increasingly about self-serving political speech of the Board President and less about the actual administration of Orange Unified School District. It began with former President Ledesma, who thankfully is no longer here because we recalled him, who, while facing that recall, used the President's Report to combat his recall, not speak about the administration of Orange Unified School District. It continued with former President, thankfully, former President Jean Ortega, who used the President's Report to bully intimidate teachers, suppress free speech, and issue threats of lawsuits from the dais, even prompting letters on two separate occasions from the First Amendment Coalition. I would like to see the President's Report returned to its primary purpose and focus the administration of Orange Unified School District for Orange Unified School District students, parents, teachers, and staff. I hope that through the recall, through firing President Jean Ortega, we will restore order to Orange Unified School District and restore order to the President's Report. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
No.
Okay. Well, I just want to, um, thank, you know, for being nominated and, and I'm excited and looking forward to serving as president. You know, being an alum of this district. Um, and then now my children attend the schools that I used to go to, and so it's just, really empowering, um, to now serve, um, for the rest of this year. And, um, some of the events that I attended this last month, where Richland hosted their winter graduation, and so Davina's back. Thank you for still serving on the board, even though you've graduated. And so in addition to our student board member Davina, there were many Richland High School students who graduated this last March. And, I mean, it was definitely a day to celebrate, filled with loved ones cheering on their graduates. And many teachers had so many inspiring and tear-jerking comments to say about their students as they move on to their next steps. So congratulations to all of our Richland, um, graduates. There were many VAPA performances, um, in the last month, and, um, I attended along with trustee Erickson, Yamazaki, and, um, our mayor to the VAPA music band and orchestra held at Chapman University, as you saw the pictures earlier. Our students are absolutely talented, and it's just amazing to see our elementary school VAPA students perform all the way up to high schoolers, and you can see how they build on, um, their mu- music talents. And, um, we were chatting after the performances with the music directors about, how amazing the work that they've been able to do, just working with our elementary VAPA students just one day a week. Imagine what they can accomplish with so much more, and I'm really looking forward to our VAPA grant really expanding that, those possibilities. But our high school, um, students were asked by Ms. Green during the performances how many had participated in VAPA programs, either in middle school or also in elementary school, and many, if not all, raised their hand saying that they had been participating since they were in fifth grade. So it's just, um, to show how, um, amazing and well-fostered our program is along with our, our music directors. There was also a VAPA choir, um, performance last Friday, and I believe it was last Friday. And, um, we also had many students from our middle schools and high schools perform, um, in Old Town Orange, and they were just, it gave me goosebumps to see them perform all those different pieces together because they were so diverse. They're not your typical, um, vocal performances that you would imagine. Um, and I'm really looking forward to attending Elmo's performance of Into the Woods this Saturday here. It's going to be absolutely amazing. So that's just a small recap of the, some of the, um, things that have happened in the last month. And then we'll move on to... Is it the Board Proclamation for School Bus Drivers? Thank you, sorry, I have too many things. Okay, can I, um, have the Director of Transportation, Christine Celeste Russo, and her staff meet me at the podium, please? The Board of Education will officially proclaim April twenty-third, 2024, as School Bus Drivers' Day in Orange Unified School District. Each year, the Fourth Tuesday of April is designated as National School Bus Drivers' Day. The day originated in California in 2009 to draw special public attention to school bus drivers for their service, um, services to our schoolchildren. The district is pleased to participate in this observance and welcomes the opportunity to officially recognize and commend the district's school bus drivers for their continued excellent service to their, to our students. Further, the board encourages students, parents, staff, and community members to participate in events and activities to honor our school bus drivers. So, thank you so much, and it honestly brings so much pride to see it be driving around town and to see those yellow school buses driving around too. It's absolutely amazing, and thank you so much for everything that you do for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, everyone, Board of Trustees, Cabinet, everyone here in the audience for your support, um, for school bus drivers. Uh, this is a very small number. A lot of us here are management, but we do have some of our school bus drivers lead school bus drivers. We have some instructors, some of our twelve-month school bus drivers here with us today. Passed their bedtime, so they're about to go home. But, you know, we're honored. We appreciate all your support. We do have School Bus Drivers' Day coming up on Tuesday, the twenty-third, and invites have already been sent. We would love to see whoever's able to attend, come. We have some great surprises for our drivers. And, um, great news, we do have our first charter-style bus scheduled to be delivered on the twenty-second. So, it will be there that day for, for you guys to see in person. So, we do appreciate everything, and thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And up next, we have another Board Proclamation. It is School Lunch Hero Day. Um, and I've asked our Vice President, trustee Ramsey, to, um, share.
Can I have the Director of Nutrition Services, Jamie Sanchez, and her staff at the podium, please? So before I read this, um, we, uh, the student board members, um, have been collecting some data, uh, from their, um, fellow pupils. And some of the data came back about the food. And we had the opportunity to share that with the whole collective staff here. And, um, I was there when they were sharing it, and I just want to say I was very impressed with, with your, um, reception of that data that was shared with you. Because I think this can be a little bit of a thankless job, and I know that you, um, have a passion for it. I really sensed that and are, uh, appear to be quite the expert, actually, in nutrition services. So thank you very much. The Board of Education will officially proclaim May third, 2024, as School Lunch Hero Day in Orange Unified School District. School Lunch Hero Day is held annually on the first Friday in May in honor of each person responsible for providing food to millions of children across America. The district is pleased to participate in this ob- observance and welcomes the opportunity to officially recognize and commend the district's school lunch heroes for their continued excellent service to our students. Further, the board encourages, uh, students, parents, staff, and community members to participate in events and activities to honor our school nutrition employees. Thank you very much. And you're welcome to say so.
Thank you so much, everyone, for recognizing the hard work and dedication of the Nutrition Services Department. They work really hard behind the scenes. Uh, we are a small but mighty group here today. We have Gin Lee. She works as a cook baker at Yorba Middle School. Thank you for being here, Gin. And we also have Marcela Guerrero, who is, works in my office as a senior account clerk, and she is behind the scenes, always supporting our site-level staff as well as, um, our after-school program coordinators to serve the after-school meals to our students. So thank you, Marcela, for being here. Additionally, their portraits will be displayed in the external display case outside of the boardrooms. We have a slideshow this evening to highlight each of our honorees. First, we have the honor of surprising K. E. Conrad, teacher at McPherson Magnet. Principal Bryna Gottse had this to say about K. E. K. E. Conrad is an incredible science teacher. Ms. Conrad consistently demonstrates an unparalleled level of commitment to her students' academic growth and personal development. In the classroom, Ms. Conrad goes above and beyond to foster a love for science among her middle school students. Her innovative teaching methods, hands-on experiments, and interactive lessons not only engage students, but also inspire curiosity and a love of learning. Beyond the classroom, she tirelessly dedicates her time and energy to the Science Olympia team, instilling confidence and a passion for inquiry-based learning in her students. Ms. Conrad's contributions to science education at McPherson are immeasurable, and her work demonstrates all of OUSD's core values. Now, a little note, she was very shy and didn't want nothing to do with us. I think her students were way more excited than she was, but it was really fun to visit her in her classroom. Next, we have the honor of surprising Linda McCosland, LMT 2 at Linda Vista Elementary School. Principal Jacqueline Berry had this to say about Linda. Linda McCosland is an outstanding librarian. She does a remarkable job in instilling a love of reading in, in the students. She helps students grow academically and always encourages them to do their best. During library time, Ms. McCosland provides additional activities to extend learning. She also goes above and beyond by coordinating several special events for the school, such as celebrations for Patriots' Day, Constitution Day, Veterans' Day, Dr. Seuss's birthday, and family book nights. She has put in countless hours to make our school a very special place. It is evident that Mrs. McCosland truly loves, loves children and Linda Vista. She reflects all of OUSD's core values every single day. And you can see in the pictures, her library was literally like entering a book. So it was really neat to see some of the handmade decorations that were in that library. Both K. E. and Linda are watching with their family and friends at home this evening. And congratulations again to K. E. Conrad and Linda McCosland. And thank you both for your dedication and devotion to the students of the Orange Unified School District.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nib. And congratulations to our employees, Ms. Conrad and Ms. McCosland. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve? Oh, sorry. Oh, my gosh, I am so sorry. So we have Board Recognition of Students, Staff, and Community. Would anyone like to share?
I was very excited to see the Measure S video. That just makes me so excited every time. It's just something that I know so many of you in this audience and, you know, maybe your kids and everybody else worked so hard for to get past, and now we're finally seeing it to come, come to fruition, and it's amazing. So this past month has just been full of activity. I won't report on every single thing because I'd be here all night. And I know sometimes these reports can be lengthy, but I think that what our kids are doing in our schools is so exciting and it's good that we hear about some of the good things that are going on. One of the things that I did a couple of weeks ago was go see Battle of the Bands at Santiago Middle School, Charter Middle School. It was an exciting night. It was a rock concert with so many talented bands. And there were special judging, of course, by Scary Spice, Lizzo, Blake Sheldon, and Simon Cowell. They were all there. It was really great. And the room was packed and everyone was having a great time. I mean, it was just literally standing room only, so it was very, very cool. Another event that I attended with trustee Yamisaki and Superintendent Gonzalez was at Santiago Canyon College, and it was sponsored by SEC Supervisor Samiento's Office and the SEC Foundation. They hosted an event commemorating Caesar Chavez Day. And it was over spring break, so not a lot of our students could attend, but, but some of them did come. And they were able to see NASA engineer and astronaut Dr. Jose Hernandez. And his story, story was incredibly inspiring. Like Caesar Chavez, Dr. Hernandez was a migrant farm worker and did not learn to speak English until he was 12 years old. As a high schooler, he heard on the radio about Franklin Chang Diaz, the first Hispanic American astronaut, and someone with a similar upbringing as his, who was chosen for the astronaut corps, and that inspired him to keep going. He was always strong in math and science and eventually attended UCSB on a full engineering scholarship. He was also an upward-bound student in high school, and it was great to see our own Orange Unified School District upward-bound students there interacting with him and having the opportunity to hear his story. It was just, it was, it was fantastic. And by the way, our upward-bound students are pretty amazing. I am so impressed with them, so excited to meet them. I attended last night's Sycamore Science Night, which students' families, and it's a community school, so a lot of community members were there as well. They built catapults, they made slime, of course. Every single Science Night has slime. And they learned about chemistry with dry ice and building airplanes using engineering concepts. So it was super fun. All the kids were just having a blast. The instructors were just full of energy, and it was, it was great. Lastly, I just wanted to, one of our community partners is the Friendly Center in Orange, and I wanted to congratulate Friendly Center as April 8th marked 100 years since they first opened their doors to serve, serve primarily at that time, farmworker families, farmworkers' families, and those living in poverty. They have served and given a century of compassionate service and care to children and families in our community, offering wraparound services for the most impoverished people in our community, including food, rental assistance, counseling, and family services, education, and job training to lift people out of poverty. I'm very proud to serve on their board as well and proud to have a great partnership that I would love to expand with Orange Unified more. So I just wanted to congratulate them. They're the oldest nonprofit in, I don't, maybe, for sure in Orange County, maybe statewide. I should know that. I don't know. But it's, it's incredible, the work that they've done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Erickson. Anyone else? Okay, trustee Yamisaki.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome everyone tonight. Like trustee Erickson, I'm so thrilled to see Measure S projects come to fruition. And I have a question. I was wondering, are we going to be having ribbon-cutting ceremonies for them, or is there anything planned?
As we approach the summer and that we have definitive dates about the occupancy of the buildings, we'll have some information to you about celebrations.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Now, before I begin my report on all my exciting visits, I would like to thank the community members and teachers who have sent emails to the board in the last month. I've received hundreds of them, and I'd like, I have had the opportunity to read most all of them and will respond accordingly. For those who don't know, and like most elected officials, we don't have an assistant, so we have to respond to every email ourselves. And when we get a bunch in a short amount of time, it may take longer to respond. That being said, I just want to say your input is appreciated and valued, and we're listening. So thank you very much.
So on to my site visit reports.
Trustee Erickson and trustee Page and superintendent Gonzalez and I had a wonderful ti, wonderful time at California I Inspire Academy. They had their first international California night market. It was a community-wide event to raise funds for a new marquee. They had, well, homemade crafts, foods, and drinks were served representing many cultures. I have to say, the Brazilian empanadas were amazing. And throughout the evening, music and cultural performances by students and kids were featured. The school had a movie night, and I just thought it was a great idea that the school walked the neighborhood, or the teachers walked the neighborhood from the schools, and invited neighbors to attend. And I'd like to thank Principal Brinasso and the staff for organizing this for the community. After that event, we headed over to Taft Elementary School, because there were two events in one night, and we had a quick visit for their Science Night. We got to see science in action as students got to explore their own fingerprints and, and what makes them unique. And I'd like to thank Principal Alvarado for showing us around. Then on another night, trustee Erickson and I went to Prospect Elementary School for Science Night. And similar to the visit that trustee Erickson had at Sycamore, they had, we visited open-house style classrooms, and we get to see a lot of science-based projects. And so that was a lot of fun. And I'd like to thank principal Hinton.
Slime.
Oh, slime?
Yeah, there's slime.
Yeah. I would like to thank our ed tech team and Villa Park's career CTE teacher, Mr. Larios, for organizing an exciting e-sport competition. Superintendent Gonzalez and I went to this event, and it brought students from all over, from all of our middle schools to compete, including El Rancho and Santiago. And they had an afternoon of fun and friendly rivalry. I have to tell you, they are just so excited. There's TV screens and monitors all over the place. The kids are cheering them on. We had families there. And I'd like to thank our team for going the extra mile to do this for our students. It gives them an opportunity to show another side of them, and, and they're excited to be there. It was a lot of fun. Oh, and congratulations to Santiago for bringing home the championship. I also wanted to add, all of elementary school celebrated its 25th year. And trustee Page and Erickson and I had the opportunity to meet former students, families, and teachers and administrators who came out to celebrate. I was really surprised how many people came out. Just a fun fact, the school opened in 1876 and closed in 1987, but because enrollment increased, they had to reopen the school in 1999. So that's why we're celebrating the 25th year. So we, and that was, that was a lot of fun. And we got to see many former administrators there. As we approach the end of the school year, for those who aren't counting, we are eight weeks away from graduation. And I want to wish all the students and the teachers well during testing, because I know it's a stressful time. And we got to remember to breathe and be calm, and it's not the end of the world. But I wish them all well and to do their best. And I look forward to the end-of-the-year activities. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Rumsey.
I also wanted to acknowledge the many, many emails that we've been receiving from teachers. I wanted to thank the teachers who sent their emails regarding their compensation. As a teacher, I share the belief in the importance of fair compensation for educators. I, of course, was not able to respond, respond to each teacher, but I did make an effort to reach out to some. And I hope my response was taken kindly and as one who agrees that teachers should be fairly compensated for their work. I am committed to advocating for competitive salaries for our teachers while also being sure that we can remain safe and conservative in light of an unclear state budget. Your input is valuable, and I appreciate the time that many of you took to share your thoughts on the matter, including some very heartfelt, personal thoughts about the things that they, they do in a typical day. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Trustee Ortega.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention about the VAPA program and the honor band that took place at Chapman, being able to be there to support family and friends who were participants. And that is a program that's kind of near and dear because of its inception and how it all began, and what we had to do to it, and then to resurrect it. And so now that, you know, there's new funding coming forward, it's just transitioning one to the other. But I just want to say that fully support that program, fully supported it from the very beginning. I've seen what it's done over the years. It's done a tremendous amount for our students in these different areas, especially with our music instructors. Those folks are phenomenal. And seeing them grow as well and mature over all these years as well. So I just want to say that was, that was a great concert to be at, to see all from, you know, the low grades all the way to high school. So it was, it was really good to be there to support them and support them in that manner. So I just wanted to say, fully supportive of the VAPA program and everything that it does for all of our students. So thank you.
Thank you. And then we have our student board members.
Absolutely. Well, last week, candidates who ran for ASB, we had our elections, which was a lot of fun. Candidates were able to post on social media. It was very exciting to see the creative videos on Instagram, Snapchat, TikTok, for example. Also on campus, candidates were able to put up their banners throughout the, throughout all 86, all of our classroom, my apologies. So I would also like to congratulate the respective winners. Jimmy, James Falk for ASB President, Suzie Kim for Junior Class President, Sophie Tran for Junior Class Vice President, and Sofia Grego for Senior Class Vice President. As, as we approach the interview portion of our ASB selection, over 80 people applied for ASB. And our ASB interview panels, which includes our two administrators, Ms. Charice Scott-Sawyer and Mr. Rich Simons, it also includes our current ASB President, Tali Nasr, and our future ASB President, James Falk. As trustee Yamisaki touched on, the Villa Park eSports program, we had our preliminary tournaments last weekend. And we're also, Mr. Larios and the eSports program is also conducting a Madden tournament for students who are interested. So if you're Villa Park's Sparring, I would strongly encourage them to participate. Also, if, we also have our Campus Care with VPHS PFSO on April 20, 20th. A lucky gift card will be given to a student who participates. Also, pizza will be awarded to student organizations who contribute the most volunteers. Last time was fun, I believe it was girls tennis that won, and so they, they shared the pizza too. So I was like, oh, why not? Last Thursday, students had the opportunity to participate in a Rotary-led speech contest. Students spoke on what the four-way test means to them. A, a cash prize was also delegated to the winners. Congratulations to Francis Sampson, who came first place, Ally Zimmerman, who came second, and Victoria Bates and Jocelyn Wong, who tied for third. Also tomorrow, Villa Park High School's Interact Club will be holding a painting event for tote bags for local homeless shelters at the Villa Park City Hall. It will be in conjunction with Canyon High School's Interact Club as well. I also wanted to recognize Clockwork Oranges wins the robotics competition. This weekend, Clockwork's Oranges team compromised Villa Park High School students, Anya Chopra, Amelia Schroeder, Chris Bune, Ryan Vu, and Melinda Nguyen competed at the Aerospace Valley Regional Competition and won. Their team will now move on to the championship in Houston this April. Also, I just wanted to mention as well, Prong will be on the Saturday, on Saturday, May 18th, at the Codo, at the, my apologies, the Codo Valley Country Club in Codo de Casa. It'll be lots of fun, and I strongly encourage students to buy their tickets early. Thank you.
Good evening, President Page, Superintendent Gonzalez, and board members. Our Panthers have been really busy. Just this week, our juniors are doing SVAC. My younger brother is a junior, and he's just been telling me how thrilled he is doing the SVAC.[1697.28] Also, pizza will be awarded to student organizations who contribute the most volunteers. Last time was fun, I believe it was girls tennis that won, and so they shared the pizza too. So I was like, oh, why not? Last Thursday, students had the opportunity to participate in a Rotary-led speech contest. Students spoke on what the four-way test means to them. A cash prize was also delegated to the winners. Congratulations to Francis Sampson, who came first place, Ally Zimmerman, who came second, and Victoria Bates and Jocelyn Wong, who tied for third. Also tomorrow, Villa Park High School's Interact Club will be holding a painting event for tote bags for local homeless shelters at the Villa Park City Hall. It will be in conjunction with Canyon High School's Interact Club as well. I also wanted to recognize Clockwork Orange's wins the robotics competition. This weekend, Clockwork's Orange's team compromised Villa Park High School students, Anya Chopra, Amelia Schroder, Chris Bune, Ryan Vu and Melinda Nguyen competed at the Aerospace Valley Regional Competition and won. Their team will now move on to the championship in Houston this April. Also, I just wanted to mention as well, prom will be on the Saturday, on Saturday, May 18th, at the Cote, at the, my apologies, the Coto Valley Country Club in Cote d'Acasa. It'll be lots of fun and I strongly encourage students to buy their tickets early. Thank you.
Good evening, President Page, superintendent Gonzalez and board members. Our Panthers have been really busy. Just this week, our juniors are doing S-Back. My younger brother is a junior and he's just been telling me how thrilled he is doing the S-Back. Our Jerry TC program, forgive me if I pronounce the name wrong, attended K Oakley High School in Hawaii Raiders competition. Unfortunately, they did not place, but they did a great job presenting our Panther pride everywhere. And as well as, they did go to Washington as well, learning about leadership skills and getting involved. We had our penny drive and we raised $3,000. Half of it goes to Leukemia Lymphoma Society and our local friendly center. Tomorrow, two representatives will come pick up the checks during our spring assemblies to celebrate all our students' hard work fundraising this money. And our clubs are busy and getting involved. Our Expanding Horizon Club and other various clubs will be hosting a talent show, April 17th, at our Dome from 5:00 to 7:00. It is open to all community members. The tickets are just $10. And various clubs will be selling a lot of snacks. I'm really excited. You will see me there with a ton of food. And tomorrow, Cambridge has their little carnival and our ASB and other students get to volunteer and be involved. I love going to all the elementary's little carnivals. Last one I attended was West Orange and I had a blast with the party robot they had. Tomorrow, it will be from 4:00 to 7:00 and unfortunately, I'm not sure of any prices. Our FFA Farm, because we have a farm at school, will be hosting Farm Fest, April 26th. The tickets are just $5 at the door from 4:00 to 6:00. Our prom theme is Princess and the Frog, and it will be in Santa Ana at La Hacienda. I've been there for Quinceañera. The venue's really pretty. And that's what our Panthers have been up to. Thank you.
Good evening to the board, superintendent Mr. Gonzalez. I wanted to, first of all, congratulate trustee Page and Erickson on their new positions. I know we, the students, really appreciate you guys and seeing you at all of the events. And it doesn't go unnoticed, so we really appreciate you. But anyways, going on at Elmo, we have a lot of similar events to Orange and Villa Park, but we started the month off with our mini club rush, which was in our new quad, which you saw in the video. And every club had a table and was able to recruit people to join. We also had our National Honor Society induction ceremony for our new members for next year, so it was nice to see all of the new faces. We also had a prom theme reveal, similar to them. And our theme is A Night in Paris, and I think that's really cute and I'm really excited to go. And then our Mecha Club, which is our Chicano Student Movement Club, had a brand-new event, which they're hoping to make a tradition. And it was basically a school dance. It was last Friday and there was a lot of Spanish music and dancing and they sold aguafrescas and flan. So that looked like super, that looked like a lot of fun. I wasn't able to go, but I'm excited to see how the tradition grows. We, like trustee Page mentioned, have Into the Woods, which our theater program is putting on. I'm excited to go see it tomorrow night and I'll report back on how it is. I'm sure it'll be amazing. We also had our election week for ASB elected positions, so for all of our class boards and for our ASB boards. So we have that this week and voting is today and tomorrow. So I'm excited to see the winners of that. Coming up, we have Elmo Jam, which is where students and teachers are able to perform for music or sing or play their instrument. And that is coming up on the 26th and students are also able to sell items, so I'm excited to go to that. And I wanted to, of course, shout out to some of our sports teams. So our softball team is doing really good. They were ranked by MaxPreps eighth in California and, yeah. And they were ranked sixth in the CIF section for their division as well. And then, of course, we had our baseball team come tonight. They're doing very well. And just to reiterate, the Freddie Freeman clubhouse is amazing. I went in it today to film some content because I took over trustee Page's Instagram this week. So if you want to see more El Medina content, feel free to go follow trustee Page and see what's going on. Thank you.
So for updates about Canyon, we were recently named as one of the 2024 California Distinguished Schools, which is a very big honor. It's a big accomplishment for the school. I believe it's the second time in Canyon history that we've ever been, that we've ever received that honor. And so our principal is actually kind of celebrating the students. And on the 26th, he is allowing us an extended lunch and they're providing food and snacks for kind of just like a congratulation for the students. There's going to be games and music, so I'm excited. And then as for this month, or the past month, we had an Easter egg hunt that ASB organized. So there were eggs all around the school, or fake eggs around the school during nutrition. And a lot of them were cashed in for candy, but then there was one golden egg, which actually won someone a prom ticket. And then we also had a March Madness tournament. So groups of three signed up for little mini basketball games. They happened every Monday, Wednesday and Friday for about three weeks, because we had so many students sign up, until we were left with two teams and then they went to the finals. And the winners won a bunch of food, pizza, donuts and other snacks. And then we also have a ping pong tournament coming up, which is kind of an annual thing that Canyon does. And the teachers get involved, the teachers play ping pong too, so the students really love that. This week, we're doing International Week at Canyon. And so there's different days for each kind of like part of the world. So we have America, Asia and the Middle East and Europe, all represented on different days of the week. And different clubs come out, different cultural clubs come out and kind of play music, games, give food out and teach students during lunch about little things about their culture. So that's a really cool thing that we do every year. And then also, our ASB is preparing for U-Matter Week, which is coming up in a couple weeks in, in advance for AP test stress. And it's just kind of to get students' minds off of testing and promote mental health. And so we're bringing puppies on campus during lunch for one of the days as a stress relief event. And we are also, our ASB is handwriting personalized notes to every student in the school. And so each student can receive a compliment and some words of encouragement in a couple of weeks. And then lastly, the city of Anaheim actually invited our girls varsity basketball team into their city council meeting, their latest meeting. And so the basket, to reward them on their CIF win. And so the basketball team was very excited to be able to be a part of that meeting and be honored there. Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
When is Farm Fest?
Farm Fest is the 26th of April from 4:00 to 6:00.
And I want to know when Puppy Day is too.
So do I.
Just kidding.
Thank you so much for all of your reports. It's really inspiring to hear each of you share. Oh, go ahead, Davina.
So first of all, I'd like to introduce Natalie Navarro. She could come up now. She will be taking my place for the rest of the school year. I'd like to, well, I'm actually just hearing this from a little birdie that, over there, that Orange Unified Public School Foundation and Cordoba Corp. are partnering up to help support Richland's newly formed handball team. So that's exciting. I want to go and help. They will be providing a donation that will go towards the purchase of practice and game shirts, handball training camp, a Richland team pop-up canopy where places for students to rest and provide shade, fund for weekly team dinners, funds for water and healthy snacks during training sessions and games, and end-of-the-year banquet and awards and recognition. On Tuesday, April 16th, Richland High School will be having a handball game at Orange High School at 4:00 PM. Monday, April 22nd, Earth Day activities will be held, a trivia and scavenger hunt led by ASB. Saturday, May 4th, the Orange Parade participation, which ASB will be participating in. And we will be welcoming our new counselor, Mr. Vasquez, to Richland. Thank you Canyon Pride Bingo for the 410 donation. And thank you to our guest speakers for seniors during S-Back testing. I don't know how to pronounce these names out loud, so. Gary T. for ceramics, Jeff B., a retired OC sheriff and in the Explorers Program, Josh L., a future therapist and current behavior technician, Adam O. for photography, and DJ Linksey, a DJ.
Thank you so much, Davina, and welcome, Madeline, to our student board representatives. Thank you for all of your reports. It's honestly inspiring to hear each of you to, to share everything that's going on at your campuses so that not only we, the board, but the community gets to hear what's going on. So thank you for, for all of those reports. And now we will be moving on to the approval of the amendments for March 11th, 2024. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Okay, trustee Erickson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Yamasaki, we have a first and a second of the approval of the minutes of March 11th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Now, item seven, public comment. Trustee Erickson.
Yes, we have lots of public comments. I'll go ahead and read the guidelines. Persons wishing to speak should submit a public comment card prior to the meeting. In general, individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to 30 minutes. A speaker shall not yield to another person any portion of the time allotted to him or her to speak. The total time for agenda items and non-agenda items at regular meetings shall be 30 minutes. The time allowed for those who made requests to speak will be as follows. One to 10 speakers will be allowed three minutes each. 11 to 15 speakers will each be allowed two minutes. 16 to 30 or more will be allowed one minute each. The number of speakers to any agenda or non-agenda item will be determined just prior to the time that item is considered, and speakers must be present to be counted in the total. District students who have presented requests to speak will be allowed to speak before other individuals who have also requested to speak. Individual speaking time may not be reduced to less than one minute. Those who presented requests to speak but could not be accommodated within the allotted 30 minutes will be allowed one minute each to speak prior to adjournment. Public comments on non-agenda items that are within the board's subject matter jurisdiction will occur after consideration of action items, information discussion items and consent items. And we have nine public comments on item 8B.
Okay.
And, yeah.
So let's take those first since that's the next agenda item?
On item 8B, number one is Emma Hoffman.
Good evening again to the board. I filled out a blue card today because I wanted to share my personal opinion on the vacant seats of the board. And I'm aware I represent El Medina when I am sitting at the dais. I care about these vacancies particularly because one of those empty seats represents the area in which I live. I believe there are multiple reasons why filling these seats would be best for the students of Orange Unified. Our community wants to get back to normal. A normal board in Orange USD is seven seats. Let's have seven trustees, please. There is a massive amount of work that needs to be done throughout the district. I believe that it is more responsible and efficient to temporarily fill the vacant seats. I know that from now until November feels like a short time, however, there is a lot of improvements that can be made before then. From my own experience at Elmo, there is continuous construction and a large amount of unfilled teaching positions. I want what is best for the students at my school and it is more likely with all the board seats filled that schools will improve the most. For example, Villa Park might not have received the approval for their new pool, like Alex mentioned, if all of the seats weren't filled. Therefore, I feel it is just that all of our high schools have the same opportunity to be updated. With five board members, we are also close to losing a quorum. If there is ever to be an emergency with any of the trustees, therefore, new agenda items won't be addressed in a timely manner. Please consider filling these seats as I believe that this is what is best for the students. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Sorin Williams.
Hello, board and superintendent. As an OUSD parent, I encourage you to move forward with appointments to fill the vacated board seats for Areas 4 and 7. And there are two main reasons why I think appointments are needed, and they echo what the board member, student board member just said. First is to provide representation to Areas 4 and 7, who deserve it. And second is to ensure we have a quorum for the next six months. Areas 4 and 7 deserve representation, and I would argue they haven't been properly represented for at least the last year in Area 4 and for decades in Area 7. And I think the recall results back that up. It's also important that the board has enough members to form a quorum, even if one or two members are absent. And we've seen over the decades that John Ortega has been here, he's missed a lot of board meetings. And this shouldn't prevent the board from doing its business for the district. Now, to those who wish to apply for the appointments, I have a couple suggestions. This community has seen what happens when board members are controlled by their extreme biases or controlled by their wealthy political benefactors. We don't need those selfish people or people who push policies based on conspiracies or third-hand rumors. We need involved, rational, moral people who understand what's actually happening in our schools. So we need people who will do the most good for the majority of our students, not those focused on causing the most harm to a tiny minority of our students or paying back their political funders. So I look forward to seeing the good, qualified candidates.
Next, we have Michelle Weisenberg.
I will just echo what the previous people said, that it's really important that we fill these seats, that we need to go ahead and do that because we do risk not having quorum. And when we don't have quorum, we can't get district business done. And with John Ortega's history of many, 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 many absences, we can't take a chance that this might happen and then the district would be grinding to a halt in that case. Also, I do believe that Areas 4 and 7 both deserve representation in the interim while we wait for the November election time. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kim Domer.
Good evening, board members, superintendent Gonzalez, cabinet and community. My name is Kim Domer and I'm a parent of three students who attended Orange Unified Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. My youngest will be graduating from Villa Park High School this June. I'm also an education specialist in the district. My husband is a Villa Park High School alumni and I've been an Orange homeowner for 25 years. We are deeply rooted in the Orange Unified community. I am here today to urge the board to appoint new board members rather than leave vacant seats open until November. Given trustee Ortega's record for missing meetings, he's missed an average of five meetings a year over the past seven years, we need to appoint board members to be able to establish a quorum. We have so much work to do to continue to improve our schools, we need to be sure that we have enough board members present to get the work done. Please move forward with appointing board members to fill the two current vacancies. Thank you.
Next up, we have Scott Resnick.
Trustee Ortega, people are speaking. I echo what everybody before me has said so far, and I just wanted to throw in one more reason why I think having a full slate, seven trustees is really important. Earlier this evening, we saw the board committee nominations occur, and I saw 80% of the trustees get really excited, throw their names in to be on the committees, and I saw one just sit off quietly in the corner. I think having more trustees able to serve on committees is valuable. I see having more trustees willing and able, or I think you're all able to, I think seeing more trustees willing to visit the schools that they serve would be fantastic for this community, especially the trustees in Areas 4 and 7, visiting the schools in their areas. And I think for democracy's sake, it wouldn't be fair to the people in Areas 4 and 7 to just leave those seats open for the next seven months.
Next speaker is Connie Concepcion.
Buenas noches, Superintendent Gonzalez. Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva. Mi nombre es Concepcion Beltrán. Soy madre de familia de OUSD. Tengo un hijo que asiste a la escuela primaria Esplanada, una niña que asiste a la escuela secundaria Santiago y otro niño que asiste a la preparatoria El Modina. En esta noche quisiera pedirle a la mesa directiva que nombre síndicos para cubrir las vacantes que dejaron Minar y Ledesma. Las áreas 4 y 7 representan el área más grande de padres y votantes latinos en el lado oeste de OUSD, y están divididas entre las dos. El año pasado sentimos que la mayoría de la mesa directiva no nos escuchó como comunidad, y es importante que tengamos personas en la mesa directiva que vivan cerca de nosotros y que también recuerden nuestras voces cuando hablen de nuestro distrito. Entiendo que habrá lecciones en noviembre, pero nos gustaría que nuestra área esté representada hasta entonces. Muchas gracias, buenas noches.
Good evening, Superintendent Gonzalez, members of the board. My name is Concepcion Beltrán. I am an OUSD mom and have a son at Esmond, a daughter in Santiago, and another son at El Modina. This evening, I would like the board members to name members to cover the vacancies that Minor and Ledesma have left. Areas 4 and 7 represent the largest area of parents and Latino voters to the east of OUSD and are divided between these two. Last year, we felt that the board majority did not hear this community, and it's important that we have people on the board that live close to us, close to us, to remember our voices when speaking about us, on behalf of us, to the district. I understand that there will be elections in November, but we would like to have our area represented until then. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Alex Brusaw. Not Bruce Ba, Brusaw.
Madam President Page, Superintendent Gonzalez, and members of the board, my name is Alex Brusaw. I'm a parent and resident of the now vacant Area 7. It's no secret that I've worked hard volunteering on behalf of the recall. This is relevant because one of the questions that I got over and over while gathering thousands of signatures was, what happens if the recall succeeds? My answer, and the answer of many other recall proponents, because we knew the answer and we were ready for the question, was that the remaining board has the option to appoint replacements. I tell you this because it's important to know that the public is and has been informed what this process looks like, and they voted for it. Now that we're here and have improved this board by the removal of trustees Ledesma and Minor, you have the opportunity to improve it even more by their replacement with competent and qualified new trustees. While the people that you appoint will be important, the process by which you appoint them may be just as vital. The former board majority was characterized by backroom dealings and predetermined conclusions. You have the opportunity to restore confidence in OUSD administration with an open, honest, and transparent process that welcomes all applicants and scrutiny of this task that you undertake. Put more good people on this board and do it in a way that makes OUSD proud. Thank you.
Next up is John Sanks.
Good evening. I am a OUSD parent. As others have said, considering the historical absences that we've seen over the years, it is absolutely critical that we get these vacancies filled to ensure that we have a quorum so this board can continue to conduct the necessary business for the district. Now, I'm not going to agree with everything that trustees do up here. That's okay. This is America. That's not what any of this is about, but we need to move forward and have honest dialogue between our board members and keep things moving. There are a few qualities that I think will serve us all. We need to pick someone who is connected to an OUSD school, who listens to the parents, and has recent experience with an OUSD school is very valuable. No more board members who choose not to send their kids to an OUSD school. We need board members who speak honestly in this boardroom and in their online personas. No more giving a sweet story about a school here and posting a crazy conspiracy theory online. Own your opinions. We need someone who knows the school programs, has feedback on what works, and feedback on what doesn't. Let's make this a better place. We need someone who will focus on the parents, the teachers, the staff of the facilities, and will be an advocate for the OUSD community. Let's get rid of the surprises and the cheap political stunts. We need to have a transparent and open application and ensure that our board can continue to function. But above all, we need someone who is kind, will be an example for our kids, and make school board meetings boring again. Thank you.
Last speaker on this subject is J.J. Mice.
Good evening, trustees, President Page, Superintendent Gonzalez. I'm J.J. Mice. I am the spouse of an OUSD alum and the parent of a V. Villa Park High School grad and the father of a current junior on the Villa Park High School swim team, Go Spartans. Tonight, the board is discussing the process by which the current vacancies on the board will be addressed, and I'm a little concerned that there's been some misunderstanding in the community about the process that bears clarifying. There's a little bit of fear that there's going to be some kind of backroom dealings. Well, it's spelled out very clearly in the agenda tonight. There are three options. The board can call a special election now for the two seats. This would have to occur within a prescribed period of time dictated by the ed code. The board can do nothing, intending to hold the seats open until November. But as we've all discussed this evening, with only five sitting members, that could leave the board dangerously close to not having a quorum and unable to do board business. Likely, OC Department of Education would step in and call a special election in any case. They also can make provisional appointments now and allow those seats to be filled through the coming elections occurring in November. Considering the community's recent focus on fiscal responsibility of the board, I anticipate that this board will be sensitive to this and is unlikely to call a special election. This would be costly, as we know, special elections per the ROV cost close to $1.2 million and be unnecessary considering how close we are to November. I'm optimistic that all the members of the board are interested in just getting business done, so would avoid anything like that would threaten their ability to do so. That leaves appointments. The process mentioned in the agenda is pretty simple and transparent to the community. Multiple applicants can present themselves, providing their resumes, and opportunity for the board to interview the applicants in open session before the community. Applicants' only requirements in that they reside in the correct trustee area, be 18, and not have a felony bribery record. It's all very transparent. Nothing shady or behind the scenes or behind closed doors. There are three sitting board members who had a bird's eye view of things the last time we went through this process, and I am positive that they will endeavor to avoid the mistakes made by that board with the Greg Salas debacle. Obviously, I don't know if it's true, but it was rumored at the time that Fred Whitaker, the chairman of the OC Republican Party, had advised then-board president Tim Surridge that he didn't care who they appointed as long as they had an "R" behind their name. Subsequently, we ended up with an appointee with zero education or board experience and who handwrote his two-sentence application. I'm optimistic that all the current members of this board will not only avoid those mistakes, mistakes of the past boards, but will succeed in selecting the most qualified candidates, candidates who are focused on phenomenal, enriching, safe, public school education for all kids.
That's all the speakers.
Okay. Item 8B, process of filling trustee vacancies. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Ms. Page. I'd like to ask Mr. Ronald Weinkart from attorney firm AALR to come up and lead us in the discussion on this item.
Thank you very much. Board President Page, members of the board, Superintendent Gonzalez, good evening. My name is Ron Wenkert. I'm a partner with the law firm of Atkinson-Anderson, lawyer Rudy Romo. You may recall that I used to be the general counsel for the Orange County Department of Education, so I see a lot of familiar faces here tonight. It's a pleasure to be here and to lead you in this discussion. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. So, let me start with talking about the process. The last public speaker mentioned some of the points, and I'll be covering those as I go through this presentation. So, the process for filling a vacancy is set out in the education code. And so, when a vacancy occurs, the board has the options of calling an election, making a provisional appointment to fill the vacancy, or not take any action. If the board doesn't take any action within 60 days, then the county superintendent is required to call an election. In the present case, the registrar of voters certified the results of the March 5 election on March 22nd, 2024. So, as a result, you have until May 21st, 2024, to call an election or make a provisional appointment or let the county superintendent call an election. So, qualifications, I think the last speaker took away some of my thunder here. These are the qualifications for, they're set out in the education code. You have to be 18 years of age, a citizen of the state of California, a resident of the trustee area, a registered voter, and not be disqualified from holding civil office due to a criminal conviction or court order. And employees of the school district are allowed to apply, but if they're appointed, then they have to resign as an employee before being sworn in as a board member. And when an election is ordered, it must be held on the next established election date, not less than 130 days after the order of election. So, the established election days in 2024, they're set out in the Elections Code, Section 1000. They're the first Tuesday after the first Monday in March, so we've already passed that day, and the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. So, if you were to call an election, that election would take place on November 5th, 2024, as a special election consolidated with the general election. If the governing board decides to make a provisional appointment, you have a board policy that states that the board shall advertise the vacancy and solicit applications from individuals residing in the trustee area. Excuse me. The interview of the candidates to fill the vacancies must be conducted in open session. And then, a provisional appointment requires three affirmative votes when there's vacancies on a sever member board. So, you'll be operating basically like a five-member board until those vacancies are filled. And if you make a provisional appointment, within 10 days of that provisional appointment, you're required to post notices of the vacancy in three public places in the district, publish a notice in the newspaper of general circulation. And in that notice, you have to state the date of the vacancy, the full name of the provisional appointee, the date of the appointment, et cetera, et cetera. And then, as you may be aware, because I think this has happened once before here in the district, somebody mentioned, is that if the community is unhappy with the appointment, they can circulate a petition calling for a special election to overturn the appointment. They've got 30 days to file with the county superintendent of schools the petition, 30 days from the date of the appointment. So, the number of signatures that's required is 1.5% of the number of registered voters of the trustee at the time of the last regular election, which would have been November 2022. And so, I didn't know the exact number of registered voters back in November 22, 22, so I put in the, an example. So, if you have 100,000 registered voters, and I think there's a little over 100,000 if I'm not mistaken, then you'd need 1,500 signatures for the petition. So, with a little more than 100,000, you'll need a little more than 1,500 signatures. Like I mentioned, the petition has to be submitted to the superintendent. The county superintendent has 30 days to verify the signatures. They do that with the assistance of the registrar of voters. If there's a sufficient number of signatures to overturn the provisional appointments, the provisional appointments are terminated, and the county superintendent is required to call an election. After the provisional appointment is made, that confers all powers and duties of a governing board member, so they'll be just like a regular board member immediately following the appointment. They hold office until the next regularly scheduled election, which is November 5th, 2024, and then election is held to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the unexpired term. A person elected to fill the vacancy holds the office for the remainder of the term in which the vacancy occurs. So, that's kind of, in a nutshell, pretty straightforward, set forth in the education code, so I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Thank you for your presentation. Just, I mean, I think these are obvious answers, but I just want to make sure. Obviously, these are two separate appointments, so we could, if we had applicants and we chose to appoint one seat and fill one seat, we don't necessarily have to fill both if for some reason the applicants weren't acceptable.
That's correct.
Okay, and then, as far as the 1.5% signatures and the number is 130,400, if I'm not mistaken, registered voters in November 2022, that 1.5% or those petitions are two separate petitions, correct? One for one, one for the other.
That's correct, but because you elect district-wide, then it would be based on the number of registered voters for the entire...
The total number.
Yeah, total number.
And then, the last question I had is, a person appointed to fill a vacancy holds the office until the next regularly scheduled election, November 5th, 2024. Does that, is that the same situation where they hold that office until the elected person is sworn in? In other words, there could be, there is going to be a lag time between November 5th and whenever it's certified.
Right, yeah, usually a few weeks, so they would stay in office until their successor is sworn in. So, that could be, you know, end of November, beginning of December, depending on how long it takes the registrar of voters to certify the election.
So, the appointment doesn't end November 5th? We have an empty seat for a month?
No, no, you don't, no, until the successor is sworn in.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have one question. Let's say if a, oh, let's say, my apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's say if a provisional trustee runs for the November special election. On that ballot, would that provisional trustee be marked as an incumbent?
They would probably be indicating that they would be an appointed incumbent. That's the usual process.
Okay, that's all I have to ask, thank you.
Yeah, they're listed, they can't say that they've been elected. They have to say they've been appointed.
It usually indicates they're appointed incumbent.
Yeah, we litigated that last time, so.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Well, we'll be available. If you have any questions that come up later, the superintendent can give us a call, and we'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this time, the board would have a discussion about which they would like to choose, moving forward, provide that direction to staff, and then we can... to choose, moving forward, provide that direction to staff, and then we can move forward with the wishes of the board.
Would anyone like to start the discussion?
I'll make a motion that we go forward on the process to appoint and set the dates as appropriate, that we'll discuss after we decide whether or not to appoint, and then we can set that calendar.
To begin the process of appointment?
Well, I think, obviously, there's two questions, right? So the first question is, are we going to appoint or not? If we are, then we need to set the schedule. So, I mean, I can, from my point of view, I think, you know, it's a seven-member board. That means that seven members should represent the community, each community area, you know, requires that that person live in the area, and I think that the reason for that is because that board member has familiarity with the area, knows the people, knows their neighbors, you know, generally knows the issues that arise in those areas. I think it's important that we have more perspectives than less. I think fresh voices, new voices, that, like I said, represent that area. I think Ms. Concepcion said it very well, you know, having people that live in your neighborhood is important, because I think you're more likely to know what's happening in there, and at least be a little bit more responsive to those things. And again, I think the more people with more ideas is better than less, and I think we, as a board, need to peel and move forward. I think the precedent that this board set is in September of 2015, when there was a vacancy, President John Ortega called, or chose, or called, held a decision. The board then made a decision to appoint as well, and I think that that's the appropriate choice, and so that's why I'll move to, to do that, to fill these seats with provisional appointments.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'm sorry. I would just like to reiterate the concern that, I mean, politics is just, you know, it's on any level of any government, right? And, you know, as we've seen with the appointment of Rex Solis, which was greatly political, and throughout the year of the recall, which was, which created much polarization with this community, I do believe, and I am afraid, that possible appointments would create further politicization, my apologies, politicization. Moreover, if a political appointments were to occur, it would give a certain faction on this board a unelected superboard, my apologies again, it would give this, a certain faction on this board, an unelected supermajority. I think that's important to consider, as well not to mention. Again, if appointments were to occur, I urge that it would be in a nonpartisan manner, and I would also find that the notion that such disenfranchisement, again, my apologies, disenfranchisement to occur is disingenuous. It's imperative to consider the fact that voters, all voters within the district, vote for those respective trustee areas, not by district.
Ms. Hoffman?
I just wanted to clarify, Alex, is that you speaking on, for yourself, or for Villa Park, because you're sitting at the dais?
These are just statements on my own behalf, and I shouldn't, and you're right, I should clarify, these are all my own personal opinions. I'm not making this on behalf of the student body or any other jurisdiction, thank you.
Thank you.
I would clarify, though, that I believe you guys were elected by your ASB? Appointed, by whom? Okay. Okay, thank you.
So I think, Ms. Page, you have a first and a second and discussion, and then, once the board votes, then we can move forward in the next phase.
Okay, thank you. I just want to add that if this moves forward, that we gather community input, and we have a transparent process to fully represent those two different areas. So now I will call for the vote.
Could I make one more comment?
Sure.
Because I am a little disturbed by the response that one of our student board members, and I'm talking about Mr. Tran, that he is able to exercise his right to speak without interruption, and it is, it is Ms. Hoffman's prerogative to then speak back to him. Like, all of those things are fine, and I just wanted to give all of you guys the space to be able to say what you want to say on anything on the agenda. That's, that's why you're here, and, you know, we allow you to do that, and past student board members have been allowed to do that. So it does appear that the ship is tilting to the other side now, like, we all know that. But I think that we should all be able still to express our thoughts and opinions up here, and, okay, I said the word opinion, but I do believe that he was, he was speaking eloquently and to the point, and made a very good point. And I just wanted to make sure that we are giving that space to everybody, especially our student board members.
I believe Mr. Gonzalez had something.
Well, just if the board needed some clarification, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that everybody understood that our student board members are recognized as full members of the board, and are able to discuss and participate, including the questioning of witnesses and discussing issues per our board bylaw 9150. However, we do, you know, confer, we talk to our board, student board members, and we talk about them representing their schools, and if there's a time in which they feel like they are, you know, just representing their own opinion, that it would be appropriate for them to pull a blue card. But it is something that we discuss and that we coach them in, and nothing's ever perfect, so, you know, we.
And I would, I would also say that that line has been rather gray for lots of student board members.
Sure, and I think it's why we accept the comments and we usually discuss and follow-up.
Thank you.
Okay, we can continue this discussion, I think, when we do agenda prep and when we meet with Mr. Gonzalez, but we do have a motion and a second on the floor. So we'll move for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion passes for one.
Now, just to clarify in terms of providing direction to staff, now that we have a direction to move forward in the provisional appointment, I believe that there was some information provided inside of the board item itself, talking about dates in which we would start accepting applications as early as tomorrow. And so I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that we will be placing information about the provisional appointment. We're prepared to do so. So we can post something on the Board of Education page on the district website that will have information about that, including the application packet for those people who are interested. And then we will also be advertising in the Orange County Register, and then there'll be links back to that, and those people who fill out applications may submit them to the executive assistant inside of the superintendent's office, or they can walk them in, and we will also have physical copies available in the superintendent's office.
Is there, what are the dates, curious, I know, I see the Century editor here. Would that be able to, because since that's a local paper, it would be nice to be able to advertise in there, but I don't know if the dates will line up. Okay, okay, so they can't accept it because it's only monthly? Okay, just an idea, since it's such a local, since it's a local.
And we do appreciate all of our local media, and one of the reasons why we're choosing the Orange County Register is we have open POs with them as we advertise our other required publications. So we do have that available to us. We were told that it may take a couple of days to actually get it online and available, but we will have the website ready to go by tomorrow.
Okay, so you're going to have the advertisement ready to go tomorrow, and then the application packet up on the district website?
Correct.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay. And, and then according, I'm just going to read off this. So according to this item, then, the applications will open tomorrow, and they'll be open for a two-week period of time. So then they're due at the superintendent's office by 4 o'clock on April 26. That gives people two full weeks to find out about it, look it up, make a determination as to whether or not they're going to apply or not. Then it will close, and then those candidates will have to be qualified, right? Meaning they have to meet the, they have to be a registered voter, have to be over 18. Now, how do we do that part of it?
Now, as part of our bylaw, we do have that a, not a majority of board members, but we can select board members to qualify them with the assistance of the superintendent council, and also the registrar of voters has also indicated that they provide support in making sure that the candidates are qualified.
Okay, but there's no substantive screening, it's just for straight qualifications, over 18, registered voter, lives in that area, trustee area?
That would be our intention, is not to further filter those results other than qualifying the candidates.
And then how do we determine if they don't have any criminal history? Does that?
Currently, we have an attestation attached to the, attached to the application packet, and our understanding is that's the same process that the ROV uses.
Okay.
Does that mean we would have our interview meeting on May 2, at least, scheduling a special meeting?
Yes, we tentatively put in the date for May 2, so it'd be nice to get that confirmed with the board tonight, to see if that is available. And then, we don't know the interest that we're going to get, and, and so, you know, and we do have two vacancies, so potentially if we get an overwhelming number of responses and qualified candidates, it's possible that we may need a second date.
Okay. But, so since this will be a special meeting, May 2, we just want to be really clear that this is given with almost three weeks' notice, right? So people can mark it on their calendar, that, and May 2 would be the date that they would actually do their interviews in public from the podium, right?
Yes, and given that it is a special meeting, and there's nothing currently on the agenda other than that, then, you know, potentially if the board wanted to start that meeting at 5:30 PM and just go right into, into that item, then potentially there could be a longer period of time in which we can do that.
Okay, okay.
Also, I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that right now is just a tentative date, but what we try to do as a staff is whenever we have current elections or candidates for the Board of Education, we like to offer an information meeting for candidates. So right now, we have a tentative date of April 30 that staff here would offer for candidates to come in, learn more about the district, and then we also offer support from our legal counsel in just terms of things like the Brown Act and other things that a candidate may, may want to know. In this case, we've got the additional information that need to be provided in terms of what a provisional appointment means, and we talked a little bit about the length of the term, and so we could provide that information also to the candidates.
I think that's really important, that they go into it knowing, knowing everything, knowing all the rules. So thank you for, for organizing that, I don't think that was done before, so I appreciate that.
Yes, and also the candidate, the application packet that we've drafted also has the ability for the candidates to attach a resume, a letter of recommendation if they would like to, and so that includes some questions, and the questions and the Q and A that's on the application, that comes from CSBA, so that's California School Boards Association, so it's a standard template that they provide, so it's not something that the, that the staff came up with in terms of the questions on that application.
And just one thing, you, so everybody knows here, and then they're going to know, hopefully, online, they'll be notified that anything that they put out there is public.
That's correct, it is considered a public document when it comes in.
So name, address, phone number, whatever it is that's on there, if you post your resume, if you choose to submit a resume, that is all public information, because this is potentially a public office. So, and that will be, we'll have a notice of that, too, on the application?
Yes, and then also, once the board interviews the candidates, then the board could choose to make a nomination and choose and appoint the same night, or they could choose to deliberate and appoint at a later time as well.
And to be clear, the deliberation all occurs in public?
Correct, no closed session on this.
Okay. I have a quick question about the application process. I know that the questionnaire came from CSBA. Are we putting it in a PDF form that's fillable, and they can print it out, or do they have to walk it, a hard copy in?
They can choose to walk in a hard copy, but the PDF that is going to be available is a fillable PDF.
Okay.
So.
But don't you need a wet signature on it or anything?
No, you don't, and so, so Ms.
The attestation, what about the attestation part?
Yes, but really, that's to get the application in electronically, but we can get the signatures at a later time, we just want to make sure that there's an electronic option for them.
Okay, that wasn't an option eight years ago.
It was not.
Okay, any additional questions or clarifications?
I think we need to decide how long each candidate will have to speak or give their presentation, so that whoever's applying will know that they need to prepare, because we won't have a meeting before May 2. So I think it's important. I don't know how much time you gave them last time, but I would throw out there five minutes per candidate.
So when we talk about interview, it is an option by the board to construct interview questions and ask the same questions of each candidate and follow-up questions, but in terms of providing uniformity across the board, the last time there was a vacancy, the board just provided a certain amount of time and allowed each candidate to just, you know, give a statement. And so if you choose to do so, you can choose any timeframe that you'd like. It would be good to get direction tonight, so that way we can provide that information to the candidates. I believe it was three minutes the last time.
I mean, I think it's a pretty thorough questionnaire. It's, I think, I think it's fair that we just have them answer the questions that are on the questionnaire as opposed to having open question. I think that can end up favoring, you know, some people over others if we spend too much time or allow too much time for questioning. I think if everybody has the same questions, has the same opportunity to submit letters of recommendations slash resumes, I think that that seems appropriate, and then they can supplement that with their three-minute, five-minute, whatever it is. I think that, to me, that seems the most fair.
So do we decide three or five minutes? What's the consensus on the board for an interview?
I'm fine with you there, I'm out.
Okay. Justice Ortega?
Well, it's hard to assume what's going to happen in the future, we could have potentially many, many candidates, but in order to get a full picture of who's coming to present, I would kind of prefer five minutes, just to be able to get a better understanding of who the candidate is.
I'm fine with five minutes.
Yeah, I think five minutes is.
Yeah, if they choose not to use their entire
They, if they choose not to use their entire five minutes, it's up to them, too.
Sure. So I think we have direction.
Thank you. Up next, we have the Student Bill of Rights, and this agenda item was brought forth by our student board members.
We have two, two speakers on that topic.
Okay, please call them forward.
Sure, the first is Kim Trask.
Good evening, Board Trustees and Superintendent. My name is Kim Trask. My husband and I and our three children have lived in the city of Orange since 2012, and our children attended La Vida for a number of years. I am not fundamentally opposed to the Student Bill of Rights at large. I do, however, have concern with how it was noticed to the public. It was noticed as a no fiscal impact item. However, the second right reads, "The right to excel with the support of the school community, which includes but is not limited to teachers, counselors, and coaches." And with that, I want to share a little personal experience at La Vida. My husband and I were legal guardians of a non-related minor for three years, and it was a great experience. It took us to a lot of places. When we were at La Vida, first of all, he came to our house on August 10th of the year that he was required to be enrolled in kindergarten. So we very quickly enrolled him in school, as any responsible adult would do. He had come from an economic disadvantaged environment before. He was very housing unstable before. Even so, he came to our home with incredible curiosity. Every day, how do you spell this? How do you pronounce that? What about this? How about this scientific effect? Incredible curiosity. So it was always a reciprocity of, okay, well, this. He was actually reading by Black Friday, his kindergarten year. Amazing. So came time for Gate Identification. He had grown leaps and bounds, home support, school support, and the like. He was fixed on being in Gate. He had heard wonderful things about the curriculum differences, and he very much owned his education, and it was beautiful to watch. He did not meet the subjective and objective criteria to gain a seat in Gate. And I advocated for consideration on his behalf, because I knew he really wanted a seat there. My goal was not to displace someone who was fully meeting the subjective and objective criteria, but I received a very political no. And it was very unfortunate to hear that. I've written the board and the superintendent on some other experiences with La Vida that led us to withdraw, withdraw our children. I wonder if the consequential fiscal impact has really been considered for the second right, because it seems to me to open the door to students who want to be in Gate, students who want to attend McPherson, these seat-specific spaces. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Colleen.
Hi, my name is Colleen, and I am a parent of three elementary kids in this district. It's interesting that number one on the Student Bill of Rights is the right to a state-standard curriculum education. It's interesting, because I have been fighting for four months trying to get my eight-year-old access to the state-standard education in this district. And this Bill of Rights, as it is written, would have done nothing to help me or her fight for access for her. You honestly don't need this. You need the district staff to do their job and enforce ed code and district policy. District staff has known since January, when I filed a complaint on behalf of my daughter, who is being forced to complete fourth-grade I-ready lessons in her third-grade class and being graded on it. So she would sit in class and deep breathe and try and tuck down her tears, because she couldn't pass any lessons. The district staff took 70 days to review my complaint and substantiated that the grading of I-ready violated district policy and ed code. The district was forced to remove all I-ready scores from my child's permanent records. In the weeks and months following my complaint, the staff has done nothing to stop the grading of I-ready for every other student in this district. Is it just the complaining parents that get attention? Or should all kids get attention? The grading of I-ready is inequitable, inequitable, however you want to say it. It violates ed code and district policy. This Bill of Rights, as it is written, if you're genuinely wanting to protect kids and parents, it's vague, distracting, it distracts against the policies already in place. If you are genuinely concerned about, get, concerned about all kids getting access to an equitable education, you need to, you need to compel district staff to actually follow district policy and ed code regarding grading policies. Stop the grading of I-ready district-wide, and don't do it secretly. Actually tell people. Literally, my, my kid's third-grade teacher, do you know how they announced it to parents? They deleted three words. I-ready is no longer graded. They, they deleted three words. That's their big announcement to parents. Inform parents as to why this policy is being removed. And you know what? I'm going to hear this argument, and I'm so sick of it. It's not just my kid. My kid is not the only child in this district that's been graded on I-ready. There are thousands of kids. And if you're changing my kid's permanent record, then you should be changing everybody's permanent records. I have spent the last, like, six months, like, bouncing this idea, like, I'm crazy. How is this being graded? And to my fellow colleagues that I've been in three different districts as an educator, all of them respond, Colleen, we don't grade this in this district. I have no idea why yours is. This is so inequitable. This should have never happened to my eight-year-old. And kids in this district at home, right now, when their parents are hustling dinner and trying to get dinner on the table and get their homework done, or having to do I-readies, could have recess.
Okay, at this time, we will have our student board members come up to the podium and present.
Sure. All right, well, testing, testing, one, two, three. Well, good evening, Board President, members of the board, cabinet, and community. We're here tonight to present the Student Bill of Rights, an outcome of the dedicated efforts of the student board representative, student board, my apologies, student board representatives of this course of this year.
The Orange Unified School District Board of Education adopted the, a Bill of Rights in 1988, well before any of us were born. Reviewing and updating the Student Bill of Rights while engaging with our fellow students in the process was a project that was important to all of us. As in the past, this continues to be a student-led effort.
The student board members, with the assistance of trustees Paige and Rumsey, reviewed the 1980s document, as well as worked with the work of last year's students. We set out with the goal to update the bill to more accurately reflect the wants and needs of the current OUSD students. After updating the survey, we engaged with our fellow secondary students across the district through the collection of survey, survey information and on-campus discussions to gather feedback.
Student board members met to analyze the data. Students provided input on general topics such as course offerings and curriculum, school safety and support, facilities and food offerings. The revised document was shared back with students and staff.
Additionally, we had the opportunity to share what we learned in our experience by representing, by presenting to the expanded cabinet at the district office. Expanded cabinet is made up of directors from all departments across the district and across site administration, administrator, sorry, for, from each level.
During the adoption of the original bill in 1988, trustee Englander stated, "The Student Bill of Rights being adopted tonight is a reaffirmation of the board and staff's commitment to empowering students to reach their full potential. It is not seen as a platitude, but as a promise by the board to protect the rights of students. It will be our guide for the adoption of board policy, direction to staff, and allocation of district resources."
With that in mind, we offer you this current update version of the document.
Our first two rights are stated as, "The right to state standard curriculum and to learn at a level and pace appropriate to each student's ability." And our second is, "The right to excel with the support of the school community, which includes but is not limited to teachers, counselors, and coaches."
You also have, "The right to gain skills that will enable students to be college and career-ready, the right to retain individuality within the limitations and boundaries of school policies."
"The right to be treated with dignity, the right to embrace one's ethnic, cultural, and social backgrounds."
"The right to a safe environment and the right to safe and clean facilities."
"The right to participate in additional educational opportunities, the right to provide feedback through various student voice platforms."
We would like to thank you, the previous student board members, current students who participated in the process, trustee Paige and Rumsey, superintendent Gonzalez, and Mr. Abercrombie for their help and support.
It is our recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the proposed Student Bill of Rights as it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you so much, student board members. I know this was a year-long process for all of you, and it was introduced and handed over from the previous student board members. And the amount of work that you've all put into it and the dedication of not just working amongst yourselves or our meetings that we've had together to really dive deep and analyze all the different data, is not just the quantitative reports, but also all the narrative responses that we received. There were over 1,500 responses, and, and we really read every single one of them. In addition to that, our student board members also presented all the feedback that they heard from their fellow students from secondary schools that, and presented it to expanded cabinet, to be able to share a lot of those concerns, mainly because a lot of that feedback maybe necessarily wasn't a part of, like, a new right that would be included, but it possibly aligned with one existing one or another one that was grouped up. That would be representative of all our students from preschool all the way up to adult education, because we do serve zero to 22-year-olds, that it was written in the way that it was. And, but that you were able to go back to all of your student bodies and able to share that their feedback was also heard and that you spoke to whoever needed to, a part of the district. So my deepest appreciation for the additional work that you've taken on as your role and to update the Bill of Rights that has been adopted as long as I've been alive, I think.
I just echo those thoughts and sentiments. I want everyone to know that they did all the work. We were, we advised, but they, they were the ones who did all the work. So, very good job.
So with that, I would like to move to adopt the Student Bill of Rights. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, you second.
I'll second.
Any discussion or comments?
I just want to say, I'm super proud of you all. I think that all of these rights, as, was it trustee Englander? Hope you said, back in 1988, they aren't platitudes. These are all really important things. And it sounds like you all had really good conversations with your own student body and really considered that. And I'm just, I'm really proud of you for all working together. I'm sure you all had different ideas, too, about how things would go. And this is, this is fantastic. So thank you for doing that work.
Thank you. Good work. I know it probably took a lot to go to your fellow students and saying, hey, give me some input, what do you think? So again, hopefully, you enjoyed the process and enjoyed interacting and, you know, coming about with, you know, something that's tangible. And, you know, your names are going to be on this. So that should look good. One of the things I have for the staff, and I did talk to staff about this in advance, when it says, "The right to state standard curriculum and to learn at a level and pace appropriate to each student's ability," I, I know it's been in discussion, and it's not just a singular individual. It's, it's multiples. And so, something to do with the I-ready and how we're going to address that. I know I did speak to, you know, the superintendent about this in seeing how we're going to address these in a, what's the word I'm looking for? An equitable manner across the board, so that there's understanding that this is something to support the students. And they shouldn't be hampered by grades or anything like that. Or even, I'm hearing stories from multiple parents where their students are not allowed to have recess unless they take this test. And I don't believe that to be fair and not to be right. So if that is occurring, that needs to stop immediately. And so, I don't know if yourself or Mr. Abercrombie would like to kind of address. I know there's some things in the works that we can only say so much at this point, but that we can go forward and share with everyone appropriately.
I, I would also concur, you know, something like I-ready is beneficial for test prep. It helps progress monitor. There's a lot of good things that need to come out of I-ready, but we need to make sure that it is not something that they're being graded on.
Certainly, in terms of a program like I-ready, which is tailored to the individual student and is adaptive and, you know, moves and could potentially go above or below grade level, depending on the, you know, what it's receiving from the student input, I think it's important to make sure that our staff is providing support to teachers as they look to provide standards-based reports to the parents on, on their students' progress. And so, I intend to have Mr. Abercrombie provide more information to you on that.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0, congratulations.
And, yeah, if I could ask Ms. Rumsey and Ms. Paige to join the student representatives, and we can maybe get a picture?
We would like Ms. Eric to be part of the picture as well, please.
Okay, thank you again. That's definitely a historic moment. And I've been reminded by trustee Rumsey that it's almost 10 o'clock, and we can vote to extend the meeting at a later time. Does 11 or 11:30?
Well, I hope it won't go that much, that long.
About 11?
I say 11, yeah.
11.
Okay. So. Okay, so.
Well, just, there's 12 public comment cards, and they would all get three minutes, so keep that in mind.
We could be on the safe side and do 11:30.
Okay, so let's extend the meeting to 11:30, just in case. Do I have a second?
Do we make a motion, or do we just agree?
Agree.
I think we just agree.
We just agree, okay. So we will extend the meeting to 11:30. Up next, we have item D, student calendar for 2025 to 2026.
And we have one speaker on that.
Okay.
Joe Lynn.
Hello, Board, thank you. This is kind of a very niche issue, but I was just looking at the student calendar, and I noticed that November 4th, a Tuesday, is still a teacher workday, which, a staff development day, which made so much sense when our campuses were used for election purposes, to not have the students on campus during that day. But now they're not, that just means there's a Tuesday where the students are home, parents have to find childcare. And then the next Tuesday is November 11th, which is Veterans Day, which also is no school. So it just seems like it may be a good idea to move that holiday, or the teacher, staff development day, to November 10th, so it would just be four days in a row, which would be easier to do childcare and all of that, rather than having two Tuesdays in a row, which is rather difficult. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Ms. Nib is going to present on this item.
Good evening, President Page, members of the Board, Superintendent Gonzalez, Cabinet, and Community. Before the Board for Action this evening is a proposed 2025-2026 student calendar, which was presented to the Board for information at the March 11th Board meeting. The district practice is to maintain three approved student calendars, one for the current year plus two additional years. This proposed student calendar has been constructed by the District Student Calendar Committee and reviewed by Executive Cabinet. The proposed student calendar also meets the state requirements for the number of school days and instructional minutes for the school year. As a reminder, the District Student Calendar Committee is comprised, comprised, excuse me, of representatives from elementary, middle school, high school, charter, district departments such as transportation and special education, as well as each of our two employees' associations. The proposed student calendar is consistent with the design of past and current board-approved student calendars, which include 180-day student instructional year and any-day first semester ending in the third instructional week after Thanksgiving break, a 100-day second semester, a one-week recess at Thanksgiving, three full instructional weeks between Thanksgiving and winter break, a three-week recess at winter break, and a one-week recess for spring break. I always recommend this evening that the Board approve the proposed 2025-2026 student calendar.
I have a. Thank you, Ms. Nib.
Have a comment or question? It's been said to us time and time again that it makes sense to have that student prep, I mean, sorry, the teacher prep day on the day after Halloween. And I'm not sure why we aren't doing that, because kids come back from an evening of Halloween, and they're riled up, they're tired, they're sleepy, they're everything. And so what, and I know other school districts have done that, where they put it on the day after Halloween. And I'm just wondering why we aren't considering that? Is there a reason why it needs to be on that Tuesday? That it used to be, like what our speaker said, it used to be a, because it's Election Day and we had visitors on campus, now that's not the issue.
Yeah, so the Student Calendar Committee actually meets every single year and multiple times throughout the year. On your specific question, there's been extensive time spent on that over the last two, probably three years, where they have been exploring the idea of the Professional Learning Day, the significance of that day. And in doing so, as you can imagine, there's very robust conversation in the room when you have representatives from all the different schools, employee associations, departments. And specifically, the importance of professional learning and the optimal time to deliver that learning was really the main kind of study point of the committee over the last couple of years. And so with those robust conversations, they explored many options of where that Professional Learning Day could go, not just the day after Halloween, but also days throughout the year when it would be the most optimal to deliver instruction for teachers, so that student impact is greater. So after a careful study of all those things over those couple of years, it has continued to be a recommendation by the committee to not move that day. However, we do continue to meet every single year and engage in constructive dialogue around that topic and other topics that arise as well.
Yeah, because I know we've gotten, got input from students and parents, and even we had speakers come up here to talk about that. I really highly think that we should consider moving that day to the day after Halloween because of those reasons I mentioned earlier. And then being that this Professional Development Day is on a Tuesday, some families might take advantage of a extra day and say, hey, we're going to go on a four-day vacation, therefore we might be losing some time in the classroom. And for me, I think that's something that we should consider. And then on top of that, if we have an Election Day and parents have to stay home to take care of their kids, they may or may not be able to go and do their civic duty.
Absolutely, we could take that feedback back to the committee. We are scheduled to meet again when we return in the new year.
Okay, so then, if we approve today, then it's done for this next year.
Right, for this calendar, if it wants to be something that's brought back to the committee, we could potentially table that calendar and bring that back to committee. But do keep in mind, we do try to keep two full school years ahead for students.
But this is something that we've talked about in the past, and I just feel like it's never addressed, and we just come back, and it just is the same time, same thing every year. So I really isn't, I don't know, you're going to come back in a year from now?
Well, the committee is made up of quite a few people, so I'm not speaking on behalf of myself.
Like is this input giving, given to the committee?
Yeah, so in the last time that it was studied extensively, we worked with our employee associations, I mean, surveys were given, input was given, feedback was taken. That feedback did not necessarily align with some of the conversation we're having right here, it was a little bit different and mixed. And so they took all that feedback and then explored the various options that they had. And that's when they made that decision to not recommend moving that day. But again, those, you know, we're more than happy to continue that dialogue, bring back more information. That committee is pretty vast. We have, just off the top of my head, I believe we have over 15 representatives in that committee, if not a few more. And so we're more than happy to bring that back to the committee, either if you want to not go forward with this one, or if we want to do that for the subsequent ones.
I'd actually like to offer an additional option is, this is the recommendation from the committee. So, you know, my recommendation would be that you adopt it. However, if the Board would like to give direction back to staff for the committee not to just study the following year after, but study the one you're adopting tonight, they have the ability to do so, and they also have the ability to come back and offer a updated or changed calendar as well.
Well, this year Halloween falls on a Thursday, so.
So it would be really nice if they had Friday off.
That's my point.
Yeah, I think many people would probably take the day off.
Many people would want to take the day off.
Yeah, and I hear that quite often, so I'm curious to know, is the committee, I don't know.
I feel like it's nice and convenient when it falls on a Thursday like that. But it's not going to always fall like that.
I agree.
I trust the committee, and I personally feel like teaching on Halloween is actually harder than teaching the day after. They're tired, as you said, and a lot more mellow.
Well, maybe perhaps we can get our teachers to do a survey amongst our teachers and see what they come up with.
We absolutely can, and like I said, I, we have done so in the past, but feedback every single year is different, right? Different experiences, different perspectives. So engaging in that dialogue, whether we want to not adopt this calendar and bring that back to the committee and have them study this one and the next year and the following years after that, or if you want to move forward.
What would be the impact of holding off and adopting it after getting feedback from the committee?
I think the main impact is primarily on giving the information to the community to plan in advance. That tends to be just the practice in order to do so. It hasn't been, hasn't never been done before, where we've brought it back at a future, at a later time. I think that was done a few years back regarding, I believe, the same topic. So we have done that before, but that would be the primary impact is just on notification to the community.
One of the questions that I have is on the committee, are there parents who are representing other parents on the committee? Or is it mainly made up of staff and other organizations?
Primarily, like staff, departments, principals, administrators.
So.
Any teachers?
Yes, teachers, classified employees, the various departments. Again, our two employee associations both have representatives on that group as well.
And I think we just wanted to offer a point of clarification. This is for a calendar year of 25-26, where Halloween falls on a Friday.
For 2025-2026, the 2024-2025 calendar has already been adopted.
Okay, so, okay.
So the recommendation is to adopt it and give them direction to investigate? And if there is a change, then they would come back with an amendment?
Okay, they have three year, two years to figure out when Halloween is? And, well, it'll fall on a Tuesday.
Yes, correct, so we can, so we can adopt today, reengage the community, the committee the next time it meets, discuss the purpose again of the Staff Development Day, and they can choose to reengage in surveys, surveys of staff, surveys of parents, that would be the committee's work.
But it sounds like we need parents representing on this committee as well. So I would recommend that we include additions to the committee and ask that there's a parent representative from almost each different level, so preschool, elementary, middle school, high school.
I'd like to know how many parents have a hard time getting their kids up the next day after Halloween.
We could definitely explore that within maybe the context of having some staff discussion on what the optimal place would be to gather parent feedback.
All right, okay, thank you.
So I'll move it.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Yamazaki, do we have a second?
Wait, did anyone else want any, have any conversations or discussion?
I don't think so. Okay. All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Thank you. Up next, we have 9A, Student Data Actions and Next Steps, Early Learning Programs.
It looks like I'm just going to turn this over to the team, because, yeah, because we've got early learning team, but thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Okay, good evening. I want to introduce our presenters tonight and give their titles. We have here Renee Ibarra, she is one of our early childhood coordinators. She oversees our preschool programming. We have Shannon Brown, our other coordinator of early learning, and she oversees our transitional kindergarten. We have Rochelle Dale, coordinator that is over our OPK, our special ed preschool. And we have Debbie Ashmore, our TOSA, who supports all of our transitional kindergarten classes. So they have a riveting presentation tonight, so I hope you're ready.
Good evening, President Page, Board members, Superintendent Gonzalez, and Executive Cabinet, staff, and our OUSD community. My name is Renee Ibarra, and I'm the Early Childhood Education Coordinator overseeing our preschool programming. Our OUSD Early Learning Family of Programs currently serves over 1,300 students and consists of Learning Link, California State Preschool Program, Child Development Center, Orange Pre-K, and Transitional Kindergarten. Following the Preschool Learning Foundations and utilizing the Early Developmental Index, OUSD provides a structured framework for assessing and supporting children's learning and development during their crucial early years, as 90% of a child's brain development occurs by age five. Throughout California, only roughly 37% of children aged three and four are engaged in early learning opportunities prior to entering kindergarten. We recognize the impact of this low percentage of engagement resulting in many of our children entering kindergarten as their very first school experience. In OUSD, we utilize the Early Developmental Index data to drive our early learning programming. Every three years, First Five Orange County partners with all Orange County schools to provide funding for kindergarten teachers to participate in the EDI, in which they evaluate their students in five different domains: physical health and well-being, social competence, emotional maturity, language and cognitive development, and general knowledge and communication. The information gathered through the EDI sheds light on how prepared children were as they entered kindergarten. Across all domains, the most recent EDI data shows that 48% of OUSD children are entering kindergarten on track. In order to increase the rate of kindergarten readiness and future school success, our goal is for every three- and four-year-old child living in the OUSD community to be engaged in early learning opportunities prior to entering kindergarten. In recognition of the variety of experiences students have prior to school, our Orange Unified Pathway to Kindergarten offers many choices for parents. OUSD's Learning Link is a comprehensive caregiver-and-me program for children from birth to four years old, led by a qualified preschool teacher. This program offers opportunities to engage families in their child's development and connect to all that OUSD has to offer young children as it lays the groundwork for kindergarten readiness. Partnering with First Five Orange County, OUSD proudly leads the county in Learning Link locations with 16 different classrooms, located on elementary school campuses, including all of our community school sites, and our Child Development Center. Leveraging insights from our EDI results, teachers craft activities that cater to the specific needs and development of each child. Our program offers engaging music and movement, stimulating arts and crafts, socialization with other children through free exploration time, and provides a rich and diverse learning environment that fosters holistic growth. Learning Link embodies our dedication to providing quality education and supporting our community by enriching the lives of our youngest learners and strengthening the bonds between families and our district. Learning Link ensures that every child has the opportunity to thrive. We are currently reaching over 250 young children in our community through this program, with sessions offered daily, both in mornings and afternoons, to meet the scheduling needs of families. OUSD provides several options for families with three- and four-year-old children in preschool settings. California State Preschool Program enrollment is offered for free to eligible families based on income. Currently, we have approximately 275 families or students enrolled in our CSPP preschools. We have 15 part-day sessions on nine elementary school sites, including eight four-year-old classrooms and seven classrooms for three- and four-year-olds. Dual immersion in Spanish is offered at our California I Inspire and Jordan Academy locations as well. Through Quality Start OC, all of our CSPP classrooms have been recognized as high-quality with ratings of four and five stars. To earn this rating, each of our teachers is highly trained in the Classroom Assessment Scoring System in order to measure and improve teacher-student interactions and provide an engaging classroom and outdoor learning environment. Our curriculum is based on the Preschool Learning Foundations and focuses on all five of the EDI elements of child development. OUSD also offers a full-day preschool option for three- and four-year-old children at our centrally-located Child Development Center. This fee-based, robust learning program is currently open from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM in order to meet the needs of diverse family schedules. This year, our CDC is excited to add a new playground structure with a large bike trail, garden, mud kitchen, and sandbox to enhance the outdoor learning experience of our children. Now, I would like to turn it over to Rochelle Dale, Special Education Coordinator overseeing our Orange Pre-K program.
Good evening. The Orange Pre-K program located in the Anaheim Hills area supports our students with an individual education plan, our IEPs, beginning at age three, up their enrollment in our wonderful TK and Kinder programs. This is a two-hour and 45-minute program that utilizes the Preschool Learning Foundations and students' identified needs to develop and provide a play-based learning environment. Orange Pre-K serves the needs of students in the OUSD community with special education needs, free of charge, and currently serves approximately 165 students. We also offer an excellent opportunity for peer models to attend and access the program taught by a credentialed teacher at a minimum cost to families. Our teachers provide an environment structured to meet the needs of all students, support growth in the classroom, and outdoor learning environments. All services. All services identified on a student's IEP are provided at the site at Orange Pre-K, and it's a welcoming environment as we're introducing families and welcoming into the Orange Unified Families. I would now like to turn it over to Shannon Brown, our Early Childhood Coordinator overseeing our TK programs.
Our TK proudly offers a high-quality, developmentally-appropriate experience designed specifically for young children prior to the start of kindergarten. We create an environment that nurtures and enhances the social, emotional, cognitive, and physical growth of every child. TK began in the 2012-2013 school year with 278 students across 11 campuses. As we complete our 12th year, 648 students in 31 classrooms on 26 sites have the joy of a fun-filled TK experience. We continue from preschool and including our Spanish Dual Immersion TK classes that are offered at both California and the, and I, the California I Inspire and Jordan Academy. With the expansion of the TK age range to include younger students, the adult-to-teacher ratio has expanded as well. Currently, the state requires a one-adult-to-12-students ratio with a maximum of 24 students in a classroom. Understanding that the transition to kindergarten can be a different experience for every child, an effort is made to get to know each child prior to the start of school. Parents are a child's first teacher, and we invite them to complete the Ages and Stages questionnaire. The ASQ makes it easy for families to share the strengths of their child and build rapport with the school staff. Looking at each child individually, we use the ASQ to align our current TK curriculum, Three Cheers by Savas, with the Preschool Learning Foundations to ensure continuity and progression in the child's learning experiences, helping them meet developmental milestones and prepare for the demands of kindergarten and beyond. Our supportive, enriching environment promotes the social, emotional, cognitive, and physical development of each child. The classroom is intentionally designed to stimulate curiosity, foster self-regulation, build friendships, and engage students in exploration of math, literacy, language, art, and the development of gross and fine motor skills. To foster an environment of learning and growth, we have incorporated several professional development opportunities for our team members. This year, our team followed the District PD focus, attending Unlocking the Math Potential for All Students, tailored for our youngest learners. Our TK team has had the opportunity to attend after-school trainings, monthly literacy trainings, and Ask Ashmore sessions with our TK TOSA on a variety of topics for teachers and instructional assistants. Thirty of our early learning team members attended the Orange County Association for the Education of Young Children Conference, and we are sending 30 teachers and administrators to the Playful Connections Building Education and Imagination Conference in June hosted by OCDE. June 10 through the 14th, we are offering a five-day summer institute for our early learning staff, focusing on topics that include socio-emotional, math, and supporting students with sensory needs. Our site administrators have engaged in learning more about our youngest learners by attending three principal, principal institutes given by our early learning team and participating in TK tours, observing a specific area of focus with a learning intention facilitated with the expertise of our TK TOSA, Debbie Ashmore. To demonstrate the talent and professionalism of our staff and teachers with our youngest OUSD children, we have received many awards and recognitions this year in our department. May I just brag and tell you, this star-studded staff has been honored with several prestigious recognitions. Teacher of the Year, Jessica Kaler, TK teacher at Serrano. Our very first TK Teacher of the Year, we're excited. OC STEM Award for Outstanding STEM Educator in Early Childhood, Liz Moth. The Orange County Association for the Education of Early Young, or for Young Children presented the Outstanding Professional for Preschool Teacher Award to Patty Calderon. As well as OCAIC, as well as OCAIC presented seven, I'm sorry, several grants to our OUSD staff. The Orange Unified Public Schools Foundation awarded a grant to our teachers as well. And we are also honored to be the only district in the county to receive the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant, which is providing professional development, coaching, and materials for our teachers and our classes. An important factor in ensuring children in our community benefit from our many programs in partnership is community outreach and promotion. This year, we have established the Early Learning Community Center located on our CDC campus, which offers monthly family engagement meetings on a variety of topics and an eight-week-long family reading program, which begins tomorrow. Our team has been active and present throughout our community. We have engaged with families at all four of the OUSD High School showcases, The Reading Promise at the Orange Public Library, Treats in the Street, the City of Orange Tree Lighting, and the Cal Optima Resource Fair. We have established a digital library, a digital early learning update, monthly newsletter, distributed to all Learning Link, preschool, and TK families, and posted to social media. The newsletter not only shares monthly OUSD events pertaining to young children, but also community resources, resources such as links to the public library, kids' calendar, and community events. Lastly, we are excited to host our very first early learning roundup on April 27th at Fred Kelly Stadium. This event will be presented in partnership with First Five OC and will offer resources for parents such as EDI, information, OUSD programming, and even a diaper distribution. For those newly committing to Orange Unified for the very first time, we will have a big signing event that will provide parents a grand photo op and commemorative handprint, establishing their commitment to Orange Unified for a 14th or 15th year. We will also have many fun activities for kids, including make-it-and-take-it activities, face painting, and photo booths. Our hope is this inaugural event will be the beginning of a new tradition to reach our youngest learners in the Orange and surrounding communities. We have implemented a vast number of exciting opportunities for our students, staff, and communities this year, but have a very rich agenda planned for 2425. Due to the expansion of the TK enrollment birthdays, our preschool has been impacted as more four-year-olds are enrolling into TK rather than preschool. To address this issue, we have worked this year to apply for licensing to include three-year-olds and four-year-olds at 12 different elementary school sites, including three new sites at Handy, La Vida, Taft, and a consideration for two classes at Olive. To meet our community needs, we'll be expanding the hours at the CDC program to include a 5:00 PM pickup for families. Our TK enrollment is increasing, and additional classes will be added as needed. We are planning to offer an additional classroom at Serrano. We have planned a robust year of professional development that starts with the end-of-summer five-day Pre-K GLAD training to support multilingual learners. With this, with the support of our OCDE partners, we'll provide monthly after-school PD focusing on special education inclusion, inclusion practices, the new and updated Preschool Transitional Kindergarten Learning Foundations, and much more. As you can see, we are bustling in OUSD early learning, and it is with great pride that we take our role of supporting our youngest families in the OUSD district. All right, so we are going to be distributing to you an orange gift bag. We want to thank you for all the support that you have given us. In this gift, gift bag, it is a sample of our newest outreach to our brand-new cuties. These gift bags will be distributed to families with new babies throughout Orange USD Elementary School offices and community centers. It is a well, it is a, it includes a Welcome to OUSD onesie, a baby board book, brochures in English and Spanish on reading with your infant and toddler, as well as a Learning Link flyer with all times and locations. We thank you so much once again for all your time and your support for early learning, and we welcome any questions you may have. It's hard to get over how adorable those are. We have the best job.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for all of you being here this late. I greatly appreciate it, and it's just great to hear just how many students like are being served in all the various programs, and I know it's been a challenge with TK and what our CSPP program's going to look like. And then also, it's nice to hear the expansion of the hours at the CDC so that it better serves the students and our families and our community. I welcome any questions or comments from my fellow board members?
I, I have a question.
Sure.
First of all, I want to say thank you very much for this amazing work and presentation and all the work that you do. We saw firsthand at the, the event over at El Medina and all the work that you did over there, you're spending your extra days over there, and, and I saw the parents coming up and visiting your booth, and hopefully they will get more enrollment because of those extra efforts that you do. I wanted to find out, can you tell me how enrollment for these programs work? I'm sure they're different for every program, but I know some people have written and said, oh, I wanted to get into this school, but they were full, and I, well, how do I get into one of the programs? Or is it a residential requirement? Is it first-come, first-served? Is it based on age or?
Well, certainly with TK, I can speak to TK, and we'll let Renee speak to the preschool. So with our TK, there's very specific outlines from the state and what age groups fit in there, so birthday would come, that is kind of one of our clarifying questions, does this child's birthday and age range meet that requirement in which we are implementing here? Secondly, then, parents are given a choice on the application. They have a choice of all of the school choice, schools that we offer programs at.
Do you give preferential, I guess, enrollment to homeschools or?
We most certainly do. So on that application, they have the choice of listing their preferences. One to, we ask for one to five, certainly they can do more than that if they choose. Some parents want to go to their homeschools, some don't have any interest in attending their homeschools. We look at the homeschool first, then we look at our, you know, those students first within, in the applications. Then we're going to look at siblings as well, that's very important to us, to try to keep our families together. With TK class size, I guess you would say reduction at 24, that really does fill up quite quickly. 24 is not a lot. We do need to look at, you know, how do we spread our children across the district? We usually, I've been doing this for a very long time, we usually are able to serve our families within their first three choices. We do keep a waiting list, and any parent that wants to be on that waiting list usually typically will call me or call their school office, and we go right in order off of the waiting list. Every time that there's an opening at any site, we go right to the next person that's made that request.
Okay, great, thank you. I just like to know so that I talk to someone in the community that I can give them.
Oh, for sure, and like I said, we are, we are really full. We are, I think we are about 6:48 right now, maybe, maybe further than that, considering that it's only April.
Do you have waiting lists already started?
We do, for people who want to move to school sites, but we are not full completely across the district, and that needs to be a consideration as well, because we do have space, we definitely have space throughout the district, but we may not have exactly the space that everybody's looking for.
Got it.
Did you want to hear about the preschool enrollment that begins in April?
Well, I.
No.
I just want to have an idea, so if preschool's similar, or maybe we can get it in a Friday packet or?
Our preschool registration actually starts in a couple of weeks, April 22nd.
Oh, good to know.
And it is primarily, because it is a, a free program, it is primarily based on income eligibility through the state. There is a litany of, a list of, of how the rankings go. We have two enrollment experts in our office that, that work with families and figure out exactly how they rank. We do start with homeschool, but they can choose whatever school they'd like to, as long as there's room and availability at that site as well. And currently, we have some sites that have three-year-olds and some that don't, so that's also an, an indicator as well. But for the fall, we do expect that all of our sites will offer to three-year-olds as well. We're in the final stage of, of getting our licensing completed for three-year-olds.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. There's also been some questions about TK in kindergarten, and I don't know if you can clarify that, some parents are questioning, do they, you know, they're in between those ages and they don't know whether to start early with TK and then do TK twice to then be with their age group in kindergarten, or if you could speak to that.
I'm so sorry, doing TK twice, could you clarify that again?
Yes, so their birthday is right on the border, and the parents are asking to do TK.
Oh.
Multiple years, just because they are on, they would be on the younger side if they entered kindergarten.
So we are implementing the state's recommendation, which is children who are turning five between September 2nd and June 2nd. So those students that have a birthday that are turning five prior to that would be a consideration, looking at the state, a kindergarten student. So in Orange Unified, we are telling them that they are a kindergarten student. We highly encourage those families that I'm speaking with to meet with their school teacher prior to the start of school, express the concerns that they're having of perhaps why they feel their child would be better suited into TK, and then go through the process. Let the child and the teacher get to know one another, go through an assessment process if needed, work on accommodations in the classroom, and really build that rapport so we can find out what the best way to serve that child is. But according to the state, if the child turns five between September 2nd and June 2nd, those are our TK ranges.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. No? Thank you. Hold on.
I'm looking forward to attending the early learning roundup. That sounds like a fun, I'm going to stop by.
Sorry, there is a proclamation attached to this presentation, and we have the entire team here. The Board of Education will officially proclaim the week of April 6th through the 12th as the Week of the Young Child in Orange Unified School District. The Board of Education recognizes the importance of early childhood education and the invaluable role it plays in the development of our youngest learners. During this special week, we celebrate the dedication of early childhood educators, caregivers, and families who nurture and support the growth and learning of our children. It is a time to acknowledge the significance of providing high-quality early learning experiences that lay the foundation for future success in school and life. We encourage everyone in our community to join in honoring and advocating for the well-being and early education of all young children. This week is the Week of the Young Child, and there's a specific theme for every single day, and it's been so great to see how every early learning program in our district has been celebrating and to be able to share that with our community. So thank you so much for all your hard work and for supporting our youngest learners. I'd like to. We'll move up here. And then up next, we have our consent items. Do we have any public comment for any consent items?
Me too. I also.
I would like to pull item 12K myself, and then we have comments on 12L, 14B, and 14M as in Mary.
Okay, so should we go ahead and move the rest of the consent items and pull 12L, 14B, and what was the other one?
I'm sorry, 12L, 14B, 14M, and I had 12K for myself.
I believe we only need to pull the one that Chris wants, trustee Arson wants to.
Oh, we don't need to pull.
Yeah, but we can have the speakers.
Okay, let's move the speakers first.
Okay. Regarding 12L, we have two speakers, Alex Bruzba, Bruzba? I'm so sorry, I don't know why I'm doing that. Bruza!
You can't say my name or just skip it.
All right, forget you, you're out. Okay, Alex Bruza's out, and then John Sanks. Okay, Alex Bruza's out and then John Sanks.
Hello, so this item 12L is gratifying $68,000 of emergency services that have already been provided. Now, this is going to SERVE Pro. In my understanding, this is a firm that provides mole and water abatement services. And the agenda's a little light on the details here, but I'm presuming that this was to clean up water damage from winter storms this year. So I want to just get off the bat, I have no problem paying this. If it was, you know, an incident that occurred, great, let's go get things cleaned up and get back together. I do have questions about how we got to this point. So at my daughter's school, you can look up at the ceiling tiles and see, you know, that there's those little brown circles up there in various places where there have been leaks over, over the years. I've heard reports, you know, just talking to other parents around here, that there's a lot of leaks at a lot of schools going on right now. So what I want to know tonight, I would like to know how many schools are getting these leaks? Are these new leaks? Are these old leaks that haven't been getting taken care of? SERVE Pro cleans up the mess, but they're treating a symptom. They're not going to come out and actually fix the leaky roof. There's going to be another contractor, I would think. So what I want to know is what's the plan to repair any underlying problems and when is this going to be done? Is this going to get handled before the next rainy season as we start, you know, we're getting out of this year's rainy season? And, you know, these are the types of issues that school boards should be focusing on. And I think it's unfortunate that these necessities have been kind of kicked to the wayside over this last year. I do ask the board to work cooperatively with the district staff to ensure that we have a plan and that they have the resources they need to make sure that if we do have leaky facilities, they're getting cleaned up by this next school year. And, you know, I've heard a lot of talk about declining school enrollment and I don't know if there's a lot of programs that necessarily brings, you know, students and families into the school if they're not already going to their neighborhood school, but I do think that if we have leaky classrooms, that will definitely push people out. So, thank you.
As to, oops, I'm sorry. Item 14B, Christina Blevins.
Hello, good evening, Madam President, Paige and fellow trustees, Superintendent Gonzalez. My name is Christina, I'm with First Five Orange County, and I'm here to speak on 14B that you will be voting on hopefully soon because everybody's exhausted. First Five Orange County is dedicated to improving the well-being of young children and families. We were established 25 years ago when the voters passed Proposition 10 and a percentage of tobacco tax funds are allocated to every county. There are 58 counties in California. Orange County is the fourth largest, so we get the fourth largest pot of funds to support our children and families. As you heard from your wonderful early learning team, and I would like to thank Ms. Ibarra and Candy Goya, she wasn't here tonight, but she is our early learning specialist here, for all the great work that you do to serve children zero to five in your district. And tonight, I just wanted to celebrate the partnership that we've had with you for 25 years. I just wanted to highlight some of the work that will come out of this agreement when you hopefully pass it soon. The district partnership will help us connect with families throughout Orange County. We're able to connect with 23,000 families with our early learning partnerships. First Five Orange County funds every school district with a kindergarten population, so you are a part of a community of school districts serving the zero-to-five community. Additionally, we've been able to bring in over $50 million annually for preschool services across the county. So we are serving four- and five-year-olds in TK, three- and four-year-olds in preschool in 23 out of those 25 school districts. So it's a kudos to all the work doing, that you're doing here at the school districts. And then finally, 100% of our school districts participate in the Early Development Index data collection. Ms. Ibarra alluded to it in her presentation, and that gives us a percentage of children ready for kindergarten when they enter to your schools that first year. We do it every three years, so next school year, we will be collecting that data again and we hope to see those percentages go up from that 48% that you saw tonight. So thank you for your time, your continued partnership, and we continue to support you as you serve your little ones in this community. So, thank you.
And finally, as to 14M, Kim Trask.
Good evening again, board trustees and superintendent. My name is Kim Trask. My husband and I have lived in Orange since 2012. I am speaking on 14M. Last month, we had the privilege of hearing Ms. Green give a very elaborate awareness presentation on the CTE programs. And the Spider Lab was one of those CTE programs. This month, we're seeing a rounded to the nearest $100,000, $150,000 charge that is up for approval to basically train the trainers as best I can see in this one-page limited write-up. With the calculations available to me in this one page, it seems that possibly these consultants are earning no less than $300 per hour for this. And it also seems that there's some wiggle room in the amount of hours that are truly necessary because it says that it's 36 weeks, two to three days per week, two hours. So two to three days per week, does that mean we can do two days per week and save some money? Because this is $150,000. So is this the bang for the buck that's appropriate for the district? Has this been researched very thoroughly? Is this fully supported? There's been $1 million worth of grants that were spoken to in the last meeting. This again is one program in CTE, not the whole program, and it's $150,000 and it's not already in the annual budget. So I wanted to make that as evident as it is to me here in this very limited write-up, and I very much appreciate this opportunity to speak.
No, no more cards. I was just... No more comments? Okay. So moving forward, trustee Erickson pulled 12R.
12K.
Sorry, 12K. Can't read. And I will be pulling 14B. Any others? Okay. Can I get a motion to pass the rest of the consent items except for 12K and 14B?
I'll move it.
Okay. Trustee Yamazaki moves. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Erickson. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion passes, 5-0. Okay, trustee Erickson, 12K.
Yes. I am, I pulled this item. It's a Contract for School Services of California Agreement. And my issue with this is not necessarily hiring school services, which I think is a really good idea, to find our new CBO. However, I am opposed to hiring a deputy superintendent. I think that, I don't know why we would be hiring a deputy as opposed to assistant superintendent or just a, or a CBO in general. I feel like that deputy designation is something, and I understand it may be a fiscal issue, but I think that's a separate issue from whether or not we should be hiring a deputy. A deputy implies, in my mind, two thi, one of two things. It's either an incentive, financial incentive, or like sort of a career incentive, or it's usually used as a success, a move to improve succession because it's the second person in command. So you have your superintendent, your deputy superintendent, and then your assistant superintendents. And as long as I've been in the district, we've never directly hired a deputy superintendent. It's always been something, or as long as I've been observing, we promoted our CBO to deputy last year, or the year before, whenever that was. Time flies when you're having fun, so, two years ago? Two years ago. And before that, I think it was Dr. Hanson that was promoted to deputy superintendent when she was Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services. I think before that, it might have been Mike Christensen. Was he a deputy? I can't remember. He was CBO and then...
He was deputy.
Yeah. So, I mean, I've never seen us, as long as I've been around, hire directly a deputy. And I don't, I don't think that that is, I'm opposed to doing that. I think that we should be flying an assistant superintendent position or CBO position and then use that deputy designation as an incentive if we need to at a later time. But I think hiring somebody to come in is basically the second person, that's a complete unknown. We're hiring a new person unless we're hiring somebody we know, I don't, that doesn't make sense to me. And unless there's some other explanation, to me, I think we should just be hiring an assistant soup and then go from there with the deputy designation to be conferred at a later time. And it may be that we, I mean, we're looking for an assistant superintendent of Ed Services too. In our history, either one have been granted deputy status. One time, Dr. Hanson, one time, Mike Christensen, one time, Dave Rivera. So we've given them at different times to different positions. So I'm just, I'm hesitant to do that. That's why I pulled this item. So I would be opposed to, I'm not opposed to hiring school services to do a search for a CBO, but I am opposed to flying it as a deputy superintendent position.
So would we just amend that particular item and just take out deputy?
Aye. Well, okay, then I would make a motion to amend, I haven't, okay, I guess I'll make a motion to pass this with the change that it would be approving the agreement with school services to conduct a search for a, an assistant superintendent and chief business officer for the district. That would be my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second, unless you wanted to.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just think it's, it'd be relevant to have the superintendent, you know, since it's the staff member who then would work for the superintendent. And seeing what is available out there currently, there's not a lot to choose from. So it would be more advantageous for us to, to provide that position the way it is and to see what we would garner from that. And then if we were not to garner what we believe to be one of the best, then fly it out there again. But that would be my druthers with it, to leave it as is.
I, I kind of think the opposite. We fly it as an assistant, see what we get. If we don't get it, we can always fly it as a deputy leader if that is something we need to do. But that was my, my thought on it anyway.
So it's...
Thoughts either way.
Okay. Yeah, I think we always have the option of flying it again if we feel that the pool of candidates is not qualified or doesn't meet what we want. But I think, as trustee Erickson said, I think it's important for us to also use the deputy designation as an incentive. It is more money to hire a deputy as opposed to just a assistant. So I think we should start there and see what we can get.
So I'll give this information to the board and then the board can, can make their decision. But given the current environment of trying to find CBOs right now and the duties currently assigned to this position, it's the recommendation of cabinet after discussion that we recruit for a deputy. It's also the recommendation from School Services of California that we recruit for a deputy. However, we talked to school services again recently and they agreed to take on the assignment if it is an assistant superintendent of business services rather than a deputy. So they are willing.
I mean, with regard to, for instance, compensation, I mean, obviously, our compensation may change over the next few months depending on what happens with negotiations anyway. So that may resolve itself, I think, in some ways, but I think, and also, you know, there's issues like longevity, there's all sorts of issues that can affect the pay, and I think we could probably play with that in a way that is appropriate as opposed to naming a deputy and everything that goes along with that. So that would be my preference would be.
So it's not a recommendation, but we're willing and able to do so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And based on the discussion, I think we heard that we would like quick updates on the process and how it's going, and then the board can reconvene and discuss that again if needed.
We need to vote though?
Yes.
Okay.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes, 3-2. And then now on to 14B. So this is the First Five Agreement that we had a public speaker on. I'm not against First Five or the, everything the public speaker had said. I pulled it because I work for First Five, so I'd like to abstain from this vote unless there's, so if, if someone would like to...
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, trustee Ramsey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I will abstain, so the vote is 4-0-1. Okay.
4-0-1.
4-0-1, thank you. All right, public comment, trustee Erickson?
We do, we have seven public comment cards. Do I read the guidelines again?
No.
No, okay. The first one is Jolynn. Okay, she's passing. The next one is Lynn Beckman, crazy dot of 11, it says?
That's about it.
That sounds crazy.
Hasn't everybody got eleven kids? Yes, ma'am. I guess you guys have been through a little bit of turmoil, but anyways, I really want to ask you guys to celebrate the best in each other. That's, that's my big call to you guys. Freddie Freeman is a good example, more proof. Orange has got a lot of great, good people going on. In my roles of life, I've always encouraged students, you know, to accept and value each other and all this stuff about trans and all this other stuff, but just to always look afar and, and really emphasize, be transparent about our intentions about each other and do that. But in, in simple terms, part of the reason I'm here, in high school, I painfully lost a testicle to surgery, make me, I guess, after I keep hearing it, to be transparent. So, but I, I think it's important that we understand, I did not lose the essentiality of being a man, just like my best friend and armless friend, Tony Melendez, if you ever have heard him or seen him. He plays a mean guitar with his toes because he doesn't have hands. But male and female kids need to be nourished, not manufactured. That's so important, guys. Cutting off parts does not change one's sex, just as a woman's sensuality remains the same. But I've got a really important question. Why do we want to spay our daughters like they're three-legged junkyard dogs? I want to sink that in. Why do we? We want our teens to be the best, but suppose someday, a mutilated student yearns to be married and have kids. Her ripped-out womb and ravaged vagina makes her pregnancy a no-go, and her flat severed breastlessness means she will never nurse the kids she never had. We ought to think about that, look into the future. Despair leads to depression, then suicide. But the big winner, the greedy doctors who preyed on her parts at a gender annihilation care clinic. But for the record, with one remaining testicle, I have 11 kids. Now with 12 degrees, three masters, one's a headmaster, and 22 grandkids. Four of those are adopted fosters. Talking about 40 years of homeschooling while working with public school kids for these decades led me to believe that healthy life breeds good life, and we take, and we must take life and education seriously. But so everyone here, that's why I numbered it as the future. The future is in your hands. But I do have a warning. Right now, we know your kids now are to be taught new DEI CRT algebra. If you haven't heard about it yet, you will soon. Secretary of Mental Leaders just announced algebra must go DEI because, quote, "Current algebra results into definite solutions and answers when practiced..." when practices the current petronistic white supremacist suppression of Mordi rights." That's biologic science, now that's BS. But as educated board members, you might know that 2 plus 2 does equal 3 in Boolean algebra, but I really suggest you look into it and oppose the new algebra that's going to be imposed on you. Our kids deserve the best. Our enrollment is declining partly due to Dr. Death Done at Planned Parenthood. We all know that. We've killed 65 minutes. But see the connection, please. Thank you, guys, for listening. Congrats to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen? Colleen? Going once, going twice, Colleen? Okay. Alex Brusaw?
Madam President, Page, Superintendent Gonzalez, members of the board, my name is Alex Brusaw. I am a parent and homeowner within Orange Unified School District. I have a little girl who attends McPherson. On January 5th, 2023, I stood at this podium and promised that the nakedly political action of firing our award-winning superintendent, Dr. Goon Marie Hanson, would be met with the political consequences of a recall. The board majority at that time didn't take me or any of the other 50 people who got up and spoke against that termination seriously. Now I stand before you gazing upon two vacant chairs where Rick Ledesma and Madison Minor once sat. We recalled them. The other two board members responsible for that termination and other actions by the former board majority are John Ortega and Angie Rumsey. They're both up for reelection this November. My message to them? Don't run. Don't run. We've had enough. Angie Rumsey has been described as the Susan Collins of Orange Unified School District. She's concerned, but not concerned enough to actually care about OUSD students. She's a teacher at Salem Lutheran, something she repeatedly fails to disclose on government-mandated conflict-of-interest forums. She's repeatedly demonstrated that her priorities are not the good administration of Orange Unified School District. Then there's John Ortega, a disgraced former police chief of San Yocinto Community College, forced out of that position amidst accusations of sexual relationships with multiple subordinates. He cares so little about OUSD that he barely bothers to show up. My time is limited, so I'll start in 2016 with meetings that he's missed. January 21st, 2016, February 18th, 2016, April 14th, 2016, May 14th, June 9th, July 14th, August 18th, October 13th, December 18th, 2016. I'll move on to 2017. January 19th, April 13th, June 22nd, August 14th, August 17th, September 14th, October 10th, November 9th. I see that my time is limited. I got to speed up here. 2018, January 18th, February 15th, March 22nd, April 12th, May 10th, June 7th, July 26th, August 16th, 2019, January 17th, February 12th, June 6th, July 18th, August 15th, November 14th. Let's go to 2021. January 12th, February 11th, February 25th, May 29th, June 24th, August 19th. Before I end, I want to name all the classroom visits that I've heard John Ortega make. Thank you.
Thank you. Darshan Smaladon? All right. Karina Tamayo?
Members of the school board, Superintendent Gonzalez, I am Karina Tamayo, a parent of three children in OUSD schools, an active member of PTA, and the community school lead at Jordan Academy. Tonight, I would like to address community schools in OUSD. Before I go into my main argument, it is essential to provide a clear understanding of what community schools entail. A community school strategy transforms school into a place where educators, local community members, families, and students work together to strengthen conditions for students' learning and healthy development. As partners, they organize in and out of schools resources, support and opportunities so that young people thrive. Over a year ago, OUSD received a grant to transform our schools into community schools. This grant funds counselors, community school leaders, the expansion of learning links to multiple sites, and parent workshops. And over the last year, we, school leaders from our Title I schools, have participated in various training focused on the implementation of community schools. We have heard successful examples of community schools from other school districts. And a key factor in these stories is the unwavering support from the school board and the school district administration. In three years, the funding for this project will be gone. Therefore, it is our chance to make community schools a reality. While we have the guidance from the OCDE and the financial resources from the grant at our disposal, it is essential to recognize that these elements alone are insufficient. We urgently require an experienced, full-time community school coordinator at the district level to provide ongoing support through the implementation. But most urgently, we need you, school board. We need you, Superintendent Gonzalez, to join us at the table alongside the community school leaders, parents, students, teachers, classified staff, principal, and principals to create a true collective vision for this wonderful initiative. The creation of our OUPS foundation, the contributions from PTAs and PTOs, and most recently, the successful recall effort and the Freddie Freeman contribution to El Morina, El Morina Baseball Clubhouse are clear examples that parents, teachers, students, and community want to be partners with you so that young people can thrive. Without your support, community schools will never become a reality. We need you. The question is, will you fully support this initiative? Or will you let this opportunity pass by? Community schools are not just about programs, but about how we transform schools. It is not a thing we do, it's who we become together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Last but not least, Ms. Peggy Calvert.
Good evening. Board, President, Superintendent. My name's Peggy Calvert. I am an alumni of El Medina High School, class of 1968. Please do not do the math. For the first time in 58 years, there is an almost completed dedicated space for theater at El Medina High School. Not a converted classroom, not the multipurpose room, not a lecture hall or library. Deborah Gillan, El Medina High School alumni, class of 1971, drama teacher for 20-plus years, has stayed the course and will get to use this space within the next six weeks. It's definitely worthy of applause. Students with high arts participation, participation and low socioeconomic status have a 4% dropout rate, five times lower than their socioeconomic status peers. Students who take four years of arts and music classes score an average of over 150 points higher on the SAT than students who take only one-half year or less. A recent study showed that arts education experiences reduce the proportion of students in school receiving disciplinary infractions by 3.6%. Arts are important to each and every student, family, and our community. You have a chance to support the arts tomorrow night and Saturday night and go to see Into the Woods at El Medina High School, although it's still in the multipurpose room. Brooke Ishibashi, an El Medina High School alumni and Broadway actor, starring in a recent production of Into the Woods on Broadway, recently spent time via Zoom with the El Medina High School cast. You'll have to attend to see here how much the cast benefited from her professional insights. You can get tickets in the El Medina High School main office or at the door if it's not sold out. Please join me and see the play.
That's it for speakers. Okay. Thank you to our speakers. Number 19, other business. Are there any additional comments from the board or staff?
Yes. I'll just make it very brief. Just one more thing. So, just two things. Number one, I urge certain members of, I urge certain members of the public to reference themselves to the Civility Clause that is provided by the district. I believe it would be especially insightful. Two, I withdraw the statement earlier in which I said I act on my own. The statement, I believed, was appropriate and pertinent to the agenda item. I cannot say that I speak on behalf of all students, for I do not, nor anyone can. Rather, I speak on behalf of what is within the best interest of my school. Members of this board are elected even without the support of their respective trustee areas. And a misconception that we somehow live in an ideal democracy and that students should be silenced on the dice is disingenuous. If my only job is to come to these meetings and submit a school report, then the only thing, other thing I can do is to forgive the students of my high school for questioning the meaning of my, my position. That's all I have to say. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Tran.
I just, in terms of other business in the future, I would like to see a detailed report or presentation from Mr. Abercrombie about our community schools initiative and what we're doing and what kind of progress we're making in that. I think it's really important. I think it's important to the community, and we haven't been briefed on it in a while, so it'd be nice to hear that.
Anyone else? All right. Meeting adjourned at 11:09.